Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask all my colleagues to unmute and join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
President.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez? Ms. LoPera?
Present.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for the School Committee to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Administrative Guild, SCIU Local 888, and the United Steelworkers on behalf of Local 2936, the bus monitors. To have this discussion in an open meeting could be, could have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position. The committee will return to public session at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez? Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I'll ask my fellow members, the superintendent and staff, to log off from this public session and join the executive session using the Zoom link sent out by Ms. Sullivan. We will see you in a moment. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. The committee just returned from an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Administrative Guild, SCIU Local 888, and the United Steelworkers on behalf of Local 2936, also known as our bus monitors. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the December 14th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Veriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. We will now turn on the interpretation feature. Click the gold icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. We'll begin with the approval of minutes at this time. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 7th School Committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll now move on to superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. Before we begin, I wanted to acknowledge that today is the 10-year anniversary of Sandy Hook. 10 years ago, we all watched the lives of 26 innocent children and staff lost to senseless gun violence. We'll never forget the images that we saw, the faces, the lasting impression that it left on us as educators and on our school communities to this day. So please just join me in a moment of silence as we think of the families and those lives lost. Thank you. One of my priorities is, as I've been saying, to ensure safety, creating a safe school culture for our students, our staff, our families. We continue to assess our operations, our facility protocols, our procedures. I understand that this work takes a village, so we're in constant communication with other city departments as to how we can proactively work to mitigate incidences before they happen. My team was present last week at the gun violence hearing at the Lila Frederick, which was convened by City Councilor Worrell. The City Council meeting highlighted our need to continue providing supportive and healing spaces for our young people with everything that they've gone through and they are going through. We'll continue to do that in the coming budget season, and we're going to look to increase our numbers of social workers. For the upcoming summer, which I know is already on people's minds, we'll continue to support our students and families by having our social workers staff summer school programs and sites. And we'll add in additional social workers leading crisis response in collaboration with our city agencies. We're also working on expanding mentoring programs, peer leadership opportunities during the summer months, and summer jobs with the mayor's office. Additionally, we'll work with our local area youth centers to provide safe spaces for our young people where they feel welcomed. Our focus will really be to expand opportunities and programming during the upcoming summer months. As a school leader, you know, I know the importance of building trust and real relationships with our students and families. And as I've said many times, I'm fully committed to working with everyone to make sure this happens. When I envision family and community engagement, I want to expand our work through the BPS helpline as well as grow the community engagement team that we have under Deputy Tavarez. I believe that involving key constituents in our engagement efforts is the real way to pave a way forward for opening lines of communication, especially as it relates to things like community meetings for envisioning the mergers or any changes to school structures, access to resources offered by the Welcome Services, and receiving ongoing counsel and feedback from the community about the school choice process. As we look ahead, I'm excited about some of the work that we've initiated in other areas as well. You know, as I spoke about a minute ago, we're already thinking about and planning for the summer of '23. I was just on a Boston Beyond meeting earlier in the week, and to know we have so many partners thinking with us to make the summer of '23 something very special for our students, it's really, it feels, feels, you know, this is the village. You know, we're certainly going to build off of what we learned from last year, expanding partner programs where we had a lot of demand, and opening registration even earlier than we did last year, with this year, the goal being to open mid-March. And if you remember right, last year it was April, so we think that additional time will be helpful for our families and students. And upgrading our registration tools to make sure there's easily, you know, there's an easier way and greater accessibility in all languages for our families. Summer jobs, we heard from our students that they need easier ways to be able to find out about employment opportunities. And so we're working on the idea of some mobile solutions to go to the schools to help connect jobs and students. As we enter the new year, you know, School Committee will be, have a flurry of reports. But there's a couple of key reports and sets of recommendations from the Council of Great City Schools that we're eager to get and to share with you. One is on safety, school safety, and one is on transportation. We believe that these will help inform our work. And as a reminder, any of these reports, they're part of our SIP, our Systemic Improvement Plan. As we get each of these reports, as we are with the Special Education Report, and we will with the School Safety and Transportation, we'll be creating implementation plans in response to any of the recommendations that the council makes. Our schools must be safe learning environments for our students. And so we're hoping that these two reports will be key in helping us with our reform area of school safety and transportation. I'd like to take a moment to address a matter that was related to a letter that was in the media that we received from the City of Boston Finance Commission. We take our commitment to getting our students, every student, to and from school safely and on time, seriously, and we continue to work to improve our transportation system. I reviewed the letter and have discussed the concerns in the letter with the team. The current transportation contract is up on June 30th of 2023. BPS and the city have been working diligently for over a year. So this work started back in 2021, and it's a multi-year process to prepare an invitation for bids for the next transportation contract that will start July 1st, 2023. The invitation for bids was co-constructed with industry experts and across BPS and City Advisory Committee to ensure that the next vendor chosen is well-positioned to meet the transportation needs of BPS. As a result, the invitation for bids has evolved significantly compared to the current contract in order to reflect the current scope and scale of the transportation operation, to align performance incentives, to drive improved operational results, and to meet the district's long-term strategic goals and transportation needs. So accountability is a big piece of this contract. After reviewing everything and talking with the team, we're confident that the bidding process was competitive and that the bid received from TransDev meets all bid specifications. We hold ourselves to high procurement standards, and we're in the process of preparing a formal response to the Finance Commission's letter and to set up a meeting to discuss their concerns. When we talk about safety, it's not only about incidences in the schools or in our community, but it's also about ensuring our students and staff are healthy. And I know this is a topic on everyone's mind right now in the winter months. As expected, we've seen an increase in reported cases of COVID-19, and actually even more so of other respiratory illnesses such as the flu and RSV, especially after the Thanksgiving break. We continue to manage the number of cases we have with our current protocols. We meet daily with the Health Commission. However, given that we've seen an increase in cases here in Boston, specifically a significant increase in the wastewater data and numbers arising around the country as we hear about in the news, we're working even closer with the Boston Health Commission to consider a number of potential additional mitigation measures following the winter break. These discussions will likely result in proposed changes to our current protocols, but we do not have any final decisions on what those changes will be yet. We have more meetings tomorrow and on Friday with BPHC, and we expect decisions to be made in the next few days. I assure you, we will communicate any changes to our current protocols with staff, with families and students early next week if after those conversations, we deem them needed and useful. As a reminder, we continue to offer free rapid tests to each student, staff member, every week. And we have in-school symptomatic testing. We have cleaning protocols that are already in place, and we continue to stress the importance of handwashing and respiratory etiquette. Each school has enough masks and PPE for three months, and we're always staying current with that. And we have more masks centrally stored, you know, where schools to need it or to request it. We're also evaluating the data and considering adjustments to our protocols because many of you may remember last January when we had significant staffing challenges following the winter break due to a major spike in COVID cases. And this followed on the heels of the holiday break coming back as people had traveled and gathered with their families. So we're preparing now for some potential staffing challenges by maximizing our subpool. We're offering a $250 bonus for subs every 10 days that they worked. We're working on a plan for a potential central office deployment if they're needed as we look across absences in our pockets in schools. And we're setting up three times a day where we meet, as we did last year, with cross-functional teams that monitor the health and staffing situation. We are already doing much of this now, but we will continue to ramp that up as we return from the break, knowing that January and the first couple of weeks of February are usually the hardest hit when it comes to illness. We all have a very important part to play in keeping one another safe, in keeping ourselves safe as we return from break. So just a reminder, please use the test kits that we provide before you return. That's why we provide extras. If you're sick, stay home. We really appreciate that because it's one less chance of transmission. Please wash your hands multiple times a day. Use good respiratory etiquette if you're coughing properly. If you're not feeling well, mask. And wipe down any high-touch surface areas, you know, to make sure that the areas around you are clean and free of germs. I can't thank enough the BPS Health Service Team, our school nurses, the Boston Public Health Commission, you know, really their continued collaboration and partnership literally every day as we meet and we look at numbers and we discuss. These past few years have been very challenging for everyone, but the consistent feeling that we're in this together has allowed us to monitor, to plan well, and to implement the right mitigation strategies that this particular moment calls for to make sure that health and safety of our students and staff stay at the center of what we do. If there's been anything consistent about the pandemic, it's that things will consistently change, and we know this, which is why we're constantly monitoring and preparing to adapt. We're in a different moment right now than we certainly were, you know, at the beginning of the school year. You know, we have to reevaluate it based on the data and what it tells us, the science and the health and what it tells us, and we'll make the appropriate changes based on all of those things. And as I said earlier, no final decisions have been made, and, you know, we will be meeting again with Boston Public Health Commission tomorrow and Friday, and we'll expect to communicate if there are any changes to our protocols early next week to students, staff, and families. All of these decisions, again, are going to be made based on data and based on the recommendations of our health professionals, which we truly thank for their support. As I've been including in my report the last several times, I like to do some shout-outs and some bright spots of things that were fun that I was able to participate in. You know, one key area that we're working on to accelerate academic performance and strengthening access to social emotional learning. I had the chance to talk with 7th and 8th graders at the Umana as part of Boston Partners in Education's Big Cheese Event. This is where they bring guest speakers in as mentors to the students to talk about their career, why they chose to do what they do, tell a little bit about their life and how it led them to those decisions. And so I really, I had about 50, the opportunity to meet about 50 7th and 8th graders at the Umana and have a chance to have them ask me questions about what it's like to be the superintendent, what is a superintendent, what does a superintendent do, and what led me to do it. And one of my key messages was the importance of teachers and teachers in my life that led me into a path of education. So it was really a really special opportunity for me. Another example of just amazing work that's happening relative to New Deal, which, you know, is the commitment, the quality guarantee of providing inclusive, sustainable spaces for our students and families. You know, we, we just have to keep acknowledging the importance of partnering with communities and families around the planning and envisioning as we deliver on this work. It's why we slowed it up and re-engaged in the process so we could do that. And so I had the chance to go to the Josiah Quincy Upper School and what they call the raising of the beam event and ceremony. I was on hand Mayor Wu, the school leaders from the Josiah Quincy Upper, Kerry Griffin from the City Office, Jim McDonald from MSBA, we're all there, and Rafa from the School Committee, School Committee member Palanco Garcia, who's also a parent of a Josiah Quincy Upper student. And we got to see the official raising of the beam by the construction workers to signify an important completion and beginning of the process of the building of the Josiah Quincy Upper School. And we celebrated that this was a project that had spanned a decade, a decade of advocacy and a decade of work by so many elected officials, school committee members, school leaders, and the community, and what that building will signify to the Josiah Quincy Upper School, the Josiah Quincy Elementary School, and the Chinatown community. I also had a chance in the annual holiday tradition to celebrate the toy drive that our custodians in the BPS do for our children. So we did it at the Bowling Building, and they had a very large pile of toys that they had gathered from their members, and that they were taking them over to Boston Latin Academy to distribute for families. And I just expressed my appreciation that they were thinking of our children and families and others during the holidays. So a big shout-out to our custodians and to the whole membership of the custodial unit. This past Saturday, we had the chance, families came for the showcase of schools, which was at Boston Latin Academy this year. And it was very well-attended, a lot of different families, every school was represented. I had the chance to be able to go around and through family engagement, Denise Chief Snyder's work and Deputy Chief, Deputy Donna Tavarez's work to pull the showcase together. It was really a celebration of all of the fine work that's being done in our schools. There's an opportunity for families to see and engage our staff, talk to our school leaders, talk to our family liaisons, talk to other members of the school community. There were an amazing number of school students there. We saw cheerleaders from EMK. We also saw the JRTC cadets from Excel High School. And so really, we had an opportunity to just interact with a lot of students and families. And I, and, you know, I think it was a good reminder for us that, you know, on the heels of the showcase, registration begins January, began, begins January 4th. It will continue through February 3rd for grades K-0, 1, and 2. And again, that's a reminder, K-2 is new this year, and then 6, 7, and 9, and then all other grades will be starting registration in February. So again, just an amazing event, and thank you to everyone's hard work for getting that to happen. I also want to shout out something that had happened with the Mata Hug Elementary School. You know, the Tucson Livriture Academy staff and students, they were recently featured in The Globe, if you saw the article. And just, this is an academy that just provides awesome curriculum in both English and Haitian Creole. And it's really an example of our commitment and the school's commitment to expanding programming for multilingual students. So they had, they were featured in The Globe, and I wanted to make sure, since I wasn't able to include it last week, that I did so this week because they're doing amazing work over at the Mata Hug. I also wanted to provide a few updates on the impressive improvements at Madison Park Technical Vocational High School. So first, I, first I just want to send a shout-out to the members of the Madison community, the students, the families, the educators, the school leader. You know, we see you in all the hard work that, you know, you're doing, you're just pouring it into the school. And every time we visit, there's just more and more improvements. I wanted to highlight a few of the sources of evidence that, you know, really just kind of show this attention and confidence in what a great school Madison is. First of all, they received a million-dollar grant for their carpentry program. And, you know, that is going to make an already amazing program even better. Students participating in the co-op have tripled over the past two years. Students participating in graduating from Rock's Map Early College Initiative have significantly increased. This is the partnership with Roxbury Community College. Madison Park had the highest number of 9th grade students and parents that attended the freshman orientation over the last eight years, so that was a high-water mark. The learning walk that the PLCs have been doing really suggests increased access to really good vigorous instruction. And so we're just very proud of the community, the learning community over at Madison for all of the attention that they're giving to this. And the discussion for the newer renovated Madison Parks moving forward, very good attendance at the meetings, just great levels of engagement. So just very much want to just give them a shout-out and say, "Great job." You know, as Madison Park, it is our vocational high school, and we are very proud of it. I also want to frame for the School Committee the upcoming agenda related to the admission policy for the schools for next month. This is an important note on Madison Park. So if you remember, in June of 2022, Madison Park Intervention Team made several recommendations to Dr. Casilius. One of those recommendations was centered around an admissions policy. And that's also required by DESI for a vocational, technical vocational school. In August of 2022, Dr. Brown, the school leader, formed an admissions committee in accordance with the recommendation. And in October of 2022, there's been, there were joint meetings between the central office staff, Madison Park admin, and the Madison Park Intervention Team around the admissions policy. Following these sessions, the admissions committee met to develop the overall, kind of the overall strategy for the admissions policy. The process was inclusive, it was collaborative, it engaged in many different, you know, constituents in that process. You're going to hear, you know, more about this, and it will come to School Committee. But I just wanted to really compliment and, you know, thank those that are working on this because it really is a key component for Madison as it moves Madison Park forward. And so thank you to everyone for their work on that. Lastly, you know, tonight is a really important event, it's actually one of my favorite, which is the budget. And in the beginning of budget season, I really see the budget as one of the most critical things we do because it's an opportunity to reevaluate our priorities and our values and to put them forward as a district to you in our, in our budget. Um, you're going to hear a presentation um, that, you know, both this year's and next year's budget. That has a particular theme. It's around sustainability, it's around strategy and it's around student outcome. Um, you know, we're going to be approaching the end of ESSER. And begin making deep investments in areas such as inclusion. Expansion of bilingual education, equitable literacy, social emotional supports for students, restorative justice. Um, you know, high school, early college and career pathway work. And certainly family and community engagement. And this year and next year's budget. Must be done with school leaders and school communities with a great deal of support. From the budget office, from our regional superintendents. And from all of the different department liaisons that support the regional networks. Every focus area will require us to reframe the budget. Through a lens of equity and inclusion. And yesterday we brought all of the school leaders together at bowling. Um, it was wonderful to be in community with each other. Uh, I was able to talk to them about reimagining. Our work across the district and reaffirming our commitment to being an inclusive and equitable. Um, district. And so I think, you know, our leaders went away, I think with some, you know, with good energy around this, asking a lot of questions. And um, hopefully feeling extremely supported by their regional network, superintendent and teams. Um, I want to thank the CFO Nate Cooter. Uh, as well as our entire budget team. This is an intense time for them. It's when they're pulling everything together. It comes together in a very short period of time and then it's very intense for several months. As we work to get a budget to you, a final budget to you and a, a final budget passed. Um, and that takes just a lot of hard work on their part. Um, I also want to thank the school leaders and our school communities because. You know, this and next year are going to be budgets. Um, in which they will have to make some really strategic, critical decisions. About the sustainability of programming, the investment in the areas that I listed. Um, as they work with um, their school, school communities, staff, students uh, to make those decisions. In closing, um, just a few things, one. Um, it is our last meeting of the year. I want to congratulate uh, both Chairperson Robinson. And School Committee Member Tran on their reappointment. To the boss, to the school committee. Uh, Chair Robinson and Mr. Tran, our, our students, families and community. Are better because of your advocacy and intentionality that you both bring to this work. Um, I want to thank you from, from the superintendent's lens. Um, in supporting our work, supporting me as I, as I come into the district and I, I uh, begin this journey. Uh, I'm grateful for your commitment and uh, your support every day. Uh, you're always available for questions or for, for thinking as a thought partner. Um, I really appreciate your constant engagement in our meetings. Your willingness to have, you know, a respectful, informed conversation about the work. With myself and with our team. And I'm very excited for what's to come in our journey. So with that. Uh, that concludes uh, my report, Chair, and I'm happy to entertain questions.
Thank you Superintendent for your report and um, I'll open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. Dr. Alkins.
Um, thank you for the report and you know, I certainly want to begin by echoing. The sentiments of. Uh, of Superintendent Skipper by acknowledging uh, Chair Robinson, Madam Chair and um, Quoc. Um. You know, great to have you both uh, in your reappointment and. The guidance that you've been able to, to, to show, I know me. Um, just orienting me to, to, to this process. Uh, trial by fire, but um, you all have been extremely. Uh, helpful in that, in that sense. And so. Uh, I, I'm happy that you all have uh, re-upped. For the uh, the commitment here. So uh, I look forward to continuing to work with you all. Um, switching to a couple of the, just a couple of questions I have. Um. First, with regard to. Where we stand on, on COVID. Uh. You sort of mentioned that, you know, we're, we're sort of concerned with. You know, teaching film, being able to fill teaching vacancies and things like that and. Um, is there a projection for? Um, the losses that we might have in terms of teacher, you know, just bodies in schools, um, like from, on the teacher end. And then you also mentioned um, just sort of the, the, the data-driven um. Process for determining. The, at some point triggering a mask mandate of, of sorts. Um, or just other options um, to, to mitigate um, COVID and also other conditions as well. Can you give a little bit more insight into the process? Um. For not choosing to just be preemptive. And just saying like, hey, let's just institute a temporary mask mandate. You know, just as a protection. Like order, I know there's conversations around, uh, I actually don't know if there's been data. Around this, um, but particularly the. Psychological and the emotional effects of mask wearing and.
Yeah.
For, for our school communities, but I'm just curious as to where that factors into the conversation. Um.
Sure.
Do something, so.
Sure. So through you, Chair. So uh, and I may call a couple of different people into this, but. Just on, we look every day at the vacancies um, relative to substitutes. We have a centralized subsystem. Um, but then addition to that, you know, there's other functions besides a teacher that needs coverage. A school secretary, paraprofessionals, a school leader. Um, and so the school suits are constantly checking in with the school uh, leaders. To figure out are there pockets? Where there may be multiple people out and they need support for coverage. We've been able to manage that thus far. Um. Because there hasn't been uh, a, a huge concentrations. Um, so we've been able to spread out. A central staff or um, the substitutes that we do have, or schools have been able to work. To piece together with extras positions that they may have on staff. When we start to see the data going up and we start to see more absences. That's when we get concerned and we're always looking at last year as a reference point. So one of the things that's caught our eye is sort of where we are now compared to last year. And this is the data that we look at with the Boston Health Commission. It's the data we look at internally. Relative to our accesses. So we are preparing now for what we know will happen. Post-January, uh, post coming back from the holiday break. Which is as more people gather, as more people travel, we will see that uptick just as we did during Thanksgiving. So we're not going to wait for that uptick to happen to prove us right. We're going to plan for that. And so that's why we're doing a central um. Plan where we have uh, you know, eh, kind of all hands on deck in the areas that people uh, can do. So. Coaches, folks that have been sort of a fresh out of classrooms. Who it's helpful to go into classrooms, other people can cover secretary um, positions or uh, a paraprofessional position. Um, so we're really trying to align through the school superintendents. The, the, what resources we have to be able to distribute those centrally come January. Additionally, OHC is doing a real push on the subpiece. So we're working to fill the pool for substitutes. We're working, we um, we're advertising now on multiple news sites like. Indeed and LinkedIn, which we were not previously. There, the OHC team is averaging eight to ten welcoming sessions a day of substitutes. Um, meaning an injection in. We're contacting the substitutes who are already part of the pool and, and screened. To see if they want to sign on for cluster subs or can commit to more time as substitutes. So we have kind of all of that stuff in the bank. So we're really working hard to both build the staffing, but at the same time have a bench. That we know we may need to draw from. Um, in terms of the COVID data piece, I'm going to actually ask Megan Costello. Um, to just talk a little bit about the process that we go through because we do meet with the Boston Public Health Commission every day. We do look at the numbers um, in the afternoons to see it. We keep very good data and charts on this. And it's both at an aggregate level of sort of what's happening at the district. And then it's a by school level in terms of classrooms. And just to remind, we have a process where when we see, if we see three cases in a classroom. Then we'll go to a masking in that classroom. If we see a particular pocket at a grade level, we may expand that to a grade level. In the case of Arts Academy back in the fall, we actually had an outbreak. It was due to some outside. Um, socialization of the students and some things that they went to. But it created uh, enough of a pocket that we actually masked the school. So we do have a lot of mitigations that we can trigger. Prior to doing something than a universal masking. But I think, you know, when it gets to be across a lot of schools, but we're seeing really deep pockets. That's when we would need to consider doing something more universal. Megan, do you want to just kind of drill down a little bit more on um, the data that we use?
Sure Superintendent, thank you. Good evening, uh, school community members. I'm going to also invite um, Dr. Jenny Lobo Lopes, who is our Senior Director of Health Services to join me. Um, she and uh, Tusa um, are, from her team are the ones who really. Monitor the data regularly and prepare um, a presentation for us. Every afternoon that we review with the Boston Public Health Commission. Where we're looking at um, both COVID, flu, RSV, other respiratory illnesses. Um, both as the superintendent said, at the aggregate level. Monitoring that number on a daily basis, but also really digging in at the school level. Um, and we do have protocols currently in place. To address any outbreaks, which we define as three or more cases in a, in a classroom over a seven day period. Um, and as the superintendent indicated, those protocols are working. Um, but we know that as we head into, you know, the winter months here. Um, in, in increasing cases is going to be seen. And so it, it is time. For us to be having those conversations with the Boston Public Health Commission now to make sure that. Our purple, our protocols are meeting in the moment. Dr. Lobo Lopes, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Um, no, I just want to make sure that, that we're answering um. Your question as well, right? Um, so good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, I think just to expand. A little bit, last year we were obviously looking at COVID very closely with BPHC. And during our time during surge, we learned a lot in that moment. Um, we put set protocols in place. That helps us to identify anything before it's an outbreak or a concern. And so those few protocols that we do have in place have been really helpful. To mitigate any outbreaks that may happen within the school. Because we're dealing with flu, RSV and a lot of other rest, you know, illnesses, not just, you know, our regular. School-like illnesses like hand, foot, mouth disease, you know, we're still seeing everything that we would normally see. But then when you add flu and RSV to the levels that they are right now in the state. We have to monitor those closely as well. And so what we're doing right now is um, we've added that to our protocols. So if anyone is seeing influenza-like illnesses within their school. That they notify us so that we can follow up. The other thing is if they have three cases of, of flu. Confirmed flu or confirmed RSV, not just three. Um. But if they just can alert us and I, when I say they is mostly our school nurses. Uh, in line of communication, we have reporting mechanisms. Um, that flow right into our spreadsheets, so we all can monitor it on a daily basis. And we do meet with BPHC. Um, every day, four PM. To discuss all the cases. Um. We also work with Boston Public Health Commission if there is a case outside of our purview. That we may not be aware of, they also do alert us. Um, if someone tests positive for say the flu and they're aware um, prior to us. And so we do have a tight-knit communication with Boston Public Health Commission. And we are monitoring COVID and respiratory illnesses within the schools. Um, and as Megan and the super, superintendent has stated. Um. Ready to move on different protocols based on the data that we're seeing. Looking at the community data with Boston Public Health Commission. Looking at the Massachusetts flu data as well. Um, and looking at the wastewater numbers.
Yeah, I'll wait. We can come back around, sure.
Right, Ms. LaPera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apologies for the delay. The mouse kept getting away from me. Um, thank you so much for that update Superintendent. I do have. A couple of questions, um. One, on some of the pieces that you mentioned, and then two, just asking for some updates that I don't think I heard within your report. Um, the first one related to. The RFP um, in regards to transportation. Uh, you mentioned that we did receive a proposal from Transdev. Um, and that based on the proposal, it does fulfill. The needs that we were outlining within our RFP. Um, but we also know that we are continuing to. Experience challenges within transportation. And so. I was wondering if you could help me understand. What you actually mean by their proposal fulfilling our needs.
Yeah. So I'm going to actually ask um, Deputy Stud Depina to come on because he was involved directly with it. I think um, so there's, there's two things. I think one of the things that's very, that was different about this proposal. Um. In the bid was we built in accountability. For missing the mark. Um, on particular key areas. And that was not something that had previously happened um, as part of the bid process. So we saw this as a layer of accountability and incentive. To make sure that the, whoever got the bid. Um, would uh, be that much more incentivized, whereas in the previous contract they weren't. To actually meet, you know, meet the mark of what we need in terms of the driver hiring and the uh, the, the on-time percentage, et cetera. Um, and I think Sam or Dan can give you like, specific examples from within the bid of that. Um. I think the overall question is sort of like, how does a company that we're experiencing the issues with now? How will that look different in the next one? And I think that's the reason why when we constructed the bid. We built layers into this particular our um, IFP that were not existed in the other one. As, as a way to further ensure accountability to it. Um. You know, i- i- it's not one that you, we can, we restrict and say like a company can't. They put forward based on the scope of the actual. Um, IFP. A- and they respond as to how they intend to meet that. Um, so that's what we have to go by legally when we're vetting it and we're receipt, you know, we're um. Uh, going through the process. Um, Sam or uh. Dan, do you want to just give some examples of how in this one? Um, we're further holding accountable the transportation company?
Yeah, I'll let Dan speak to that, but before he does, I just want to name that regarding the IB process itself. The way we determine a vendor is responsive is that we have set criteria or bid specifications that we asked for. And it, we literally go through the proposals and determine yes or no whether they meet them or not. And um, based on what we uh, put forward. Transdev was uh, did, was responsive uh, to the bid. Dan, you want to be more specific with some of the criteria? Thanks.
Yeah, thanks Sam and thanks Superintendent. So. Uh, first, specific to some of those criteria, I just want to. Uh, highlight and Superintendent Skipper mentioned this in her report, but we. Co-constructed those requirements with industry experts who worked with us for over a year. To uh, design minimum criteria and qualifications that we believed were necessary. To ensure that. Any vendor that we're working with has the resources and experience necessary to work with Boston. Because we know that we are a particularly complex operation. Even in comparison to many other urban districts. Um, and so, you know, Transdev's bids for those specific criteria in terms of. Uh, you know, having comparable. Um. Clients and things like that. They did meet those, those technical criteria. And then uh, speaking to some of what has changed in this invitation for bids compared to the current contract. Uh, one of the things is simply updating it to meet the, the scope, scale and complexity of our current operation. Which has changed and evolved significantly in the last ten years. Uh, in terms of, you know, the number of schools we're servicing, the number of special education students we're servicing. How we work with non-BPS schools. Uh, the volume of summer service and our priorities for fleet electrification going forward. And then the other big piece that I'll highlight is. Introducing. Performance incentives as well as uh, limited but consequential damages to hope, to both. To align financial incentives for the contractor for improved performance. But also hold them accountable for uh, reduced performance. So, or performance that does not meet our needs. And so, you know, one of the key ones there is, is simply on-time performance of buses, the percent of buses that are arriving on time. There are performance incentives, financial incentives, if they hit the criteria and, you know, our goals that we need to hit. And there are damages built in if they are not hitting those.
Appreciate that. Um, and I suppose this is more a comment for. My fellow members is in what? How are we choosing to evaluate like the historical track record of a company that we've been engaging with? Um, as we're taking into account. Um, potentially re-engaging with them in the future. So. So I have other questions, but I'll wait for another go-round. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to change to Spanish or English. I want to start congratulating Mrs. Robinson and Quack for her nomination, for her reappointment again. And I want to say to Mrs. Robinson, thank you for these 50 years that you've dedicated to the public education in Boston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first of all, I just want to congratulate Chair Robinson and my colleague Quack for their reappointment. Also, I want to say thank you, Madam Chair Robinson, for your 50 years of dedication to public education.
Thank you for all your contribution and all that you've done for our education.
Thank you for everything that you've given for our education.
And thank you, Superintendent, for the report. I have some reflections.
Thank you, Superintendent, for your report, but I also have some suggestions or questions.
I have a lot of concern regarding COVID-19. Many families have come and have manifested that a third of the public schools in Boston don't have any ventilation or filters.
So many families have approached us. They're very concerned because there is one-third of the public schools, the schools that they don't have ventilation or filters also.
So we've been talking about in our meetings about a list of schools who have, we've been doing repairs,
where we've been changing the ventilation, quality ventilation, changing the filters. So I'm wondering if there is an update regarding that list where we can inform the families regarding these issues?
But through you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Palanco Garcia. I know that Deputy Superintendent Depina can update on the both how often we're changing the filters and then also the rolling out of the MERV filters. So, Sam?
Thank you. And thank you for your question, Ms. Palanco Garcia. We, with the air purifiers that we purchased, those come with manufacturers directions on how frequently we should change the filters, and we continue to do that based on those specifications. I believe it's every, I can't quote you the exact number of months or changes, but I can get that to you. But we did have a plan to put that in place, and we have the contractor in place to do that change. So that's been happening since we installed the purifier. So that should be going on. So if there are cases where folks are not sure, feel free to have those schools reach out to me directly, and I can make sure we verify that filters have changed for those. With the MERV 13 filters, we have not stopped utilizing MERV 13 filters at all. And we continue to change those MERV 13 filters in those schools with systems that can hold them on that same regular cycle. So that continues to happen. That has not changed. So if there are specific school-based questions, we can definitely connect with those school communities directly, inform them kind of, inform them what we are doing. And Chief Alvarez, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, the purifier is changed twice a year. And the MERV 13 is annually. But as Doctor Depina stated, we could definitely connect with the specific schools.
And just to add, just a reminder, we do still have the indoor air quality sensors in each of the rooms to monitor temperature, to monitor the different air quality that are happening in these rooms and spaces. So if there are any issues, we would definitely follow up with schools as well. We do still have the fans available as needed. And we will continue to urge, as we get into the winter months, make sure we remind folks about, you know, proper windows open if they feel more comfortable. And then that adds air circulation to the buildings as well. So we were nationally recognized for our work, and we continue to get colleagues from Chicago and just nationally praising us for the work that we do with regard to air filtration. So happy to discuss any school-specific concerns with folks, if that's helpful.
Thank you. Thank you. Another question. Thank you for your answer. I'm going to be waiting for the answers for the number of schools that we have been working or improving the air quality. Because this is something that concerns those families. Another question is related to absenteeism. There's so many students who are not going to school or missing school due to the different viruses that's going on. So thinking about improvement of student outcomes, what are we doing about absenteeism? And how are we managing that? Second of all, when students go home, I have heard reports that students are not taking any homework or packages with them to take them at home.
So through you, Chair. So first, your first question, Ms. Palanco Garcia, Mr. Depina or Chief Alvarez, can you just give the number of schools in which we have the MERV filter, air filtration units? Because I think Ms. Palanco Garcia was trying to understand what portion of our schools have them and to ensure if there isn't a centralized air system, that they are in fact set up with the equivalent of the air purifier systems. So can you just confirm that?
I'll look at some data that I can pull that we have a list of all of our schools with HVAC systems. So just in general, all schools with HVAC systems are the ones that we would be able to put MERV 13 filters if those systems are allowed to use them. And we can get that list. I'll look for it now as we speak.
That's great. In terms of the second, so it is accurate that when students are sick with flu or virus or any, they're missed days. The local schools have access to tutoring programming, which is our paper tutoring, but also to work with their teachers to get additional academic support when they're out for a longer period of time. Deputy Chen or Drew, do you want to just explain how that process works?
Sorry, everyone. I was drinking some water. So Superintendent Skipper said is accurate. So it is an agreement that we came to with the Boston Teachers Union that all of our teachers should be leaving there, the work that was supposed to happen over the course of that day on a digital platform, most likely Google Classroom. And students should have access to that on their devices and can access the work that was covered over the course of that day. And the district has opportunities through tutoring options that if students need support with completing that work, that a tutor could help them. They just have to bring a problem or a task to that tutoring session, and the tutors could help support them and complete that work during that time. So and I can follow up with the school superintendents. I'm certainly very concerned about what you shared, that it sounds like for some students that's not happening. And so I certainly, the school superintendents and the school leaders can ensure that that happens, particularly as we head into the winter months. But that is an expectation that we hold for all of our schools across BPS.
So I want to congratulate Chair as well for her reappointment and real gratitude for your leadership on this body. And then obviously, the work that preceded this, that you've done for young people here in Boston. And, you know, I echo Dr. Elkins too, like I feel incredibly thankful as a newer member to the committee to be able, to have been able to come to you for guidance and and to be able to look towards your leadership as I figure out how to best make this role my own. So thank you so much for your time, and I'm excited that we get to keep working together in this capacity. And I also, like, I'm just thanking all of my colleagues for their questions tonight so far because they've been so thoughtful and robust. I want to move into a little bit of a different direction because some of the, just not to belabor some of the other conversations that have happened. I have a few questions about enrollment, but I suspect it might make sense to save those for our budget conversation later. So I'm just going to hold on those unless you think, you know, Brandon, we're not going there.
No, we will be.
That's what I suspected. And then, so I guess the first question, I have six questions. I'll try to get through as many as I can now, and then I'll go to my next round. The first one's just around summer programming. I heard you name this as a priority. I'm excited about the desire to increase summer opportunities. You have heard me say this before, that I am particularly excited about increasing paid opportunities for young people through possibly the strategic use of ESSR funds. You know, I think that like that money should end up in kids' pockets. But I am curious, you say increase, and I'm curious if the team has identified any goals around the various categories, around how much we want to increase in any of those particular areas?
Yeah, so through your chair. So I would say increase, and Chief Snyder can weigh in on this, but for instance, Boston Beyond is one of our major partners. We do kind of the pre-budget for them, excuse me, for them. So we'll have a percentage increase in the number of overall programs. But I also see the increase in accessibility for the students using the seats. So special education, multilingual learners, I want to be able to see an increase to speak to that the students that most need to access the seats are able to access the seats. I also think last year, we struggled with identifying students and matching those students to the opportunity that happened on the job front, that happened on the learning opportunity. So us refining that process starting earlier, doing a stronger job on the communication, getting the information out in a variety of ways so that we're able to, like even in a mobile way at the school level, to be able to do that registration and make it that much simpler for families. So we ensure we fill all the slots. Because expanding capacity is only one issue, actually using the capacity and using it for the students that most need it is really an essential one. Additionally, I really want to see at the high school level, which, you know, tends to just be very much directed at jobs. Also to see how we can use like the career pathways as a way to incentivize summer work, but summer work connected to learning for the students and build the programming up seventh, eighth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth grade. Really where we know students, there's that void. They're not old enough to have the real paid opportunities. They're not, they're old enough to not necessarily buy into the kinds of traditional summer programming we do. So really incentivizing some of our schools and community partners to develop in that space. That's going to be a growth area for us.
It will be interesting, and I'm sure this will come to us soon as we're moving through the budget process. But as we're in it, I'm sure there's just some seat growth in particular categories across the summer programming portfolio. So it'd be interesting to hear where you're thinking about growth in addition to ramping up accessibility for those programs as well. Second question, and I'm just racing for time. You mentioned the work around the implementation plan. I'm excited to hear about the other reports. I am obviously incredibly focused on our work around special education, the broader impact on budgets. And I think, you know, a lot of schools right now are figuring out how to offer collaborative team teaching without, what I understand, any budget amendments. So I'm curious, you know, there's sort of like three things happening at the same time. There's the implementation plan around the Council for Great City Schools. There's the work that we hope is happening following the ratification of the BTU contract and the details around school-based teams to drive integration efforts. And then there is just like the real practical piece that schools are starting to plan for next year. And there's budget implications. And I'm I'm just curious how you see that all sort of connecting, what schools expect, and what that means for families who are looking for more integrated experiences for their kids in our schools?
Sure. So I think a lot of that is going to get addressed as part of the budget presentation because we're going to be talking about the investment in inclusion and the work of kind of both all schools to set foundation with MTSS process, and then to be able to talk about the explicit 22 schools with the cohort. In that, there's also other schools that are starting to think, and this was my big budget message to the school leaders, you need to be thinking, even though you might not be in those 22, what are you doing in terms of shifting your investments off ESSR onto sustainability dollars to be able to start to plan for that, be it the co-teaching, be it para and teacher, you know, whatever the design is going to be, and we'll probably end up with three or four different models at day's end that schools can build off of. So I do think you'll hear more of this as we get into the investment part of the budget.
Perfect. And then we heard, I heard last week from families that they were finally notified if they do not have a permanent teacher in their classroom. And I'm curious, you know, I'll keep asking this, and I'm saying this as a parent myself, because if I found out that my kid didn't have a certified teacher, you'd be hearing from me at school committee. So like I'd be signed up for comment. So, you know, thinking about those families, and I'm also thinking about what their options are. And so I'm thinking two things, any status update on options for those families? Is there a plan to deploy central staff into any of those positions that we are still, that still do not have certified teachers? And then I think more specifically, what is the current number that we're seeing of uncertified or non-permanent teachers that are still inside classrooms right now?
Sure. So I think if Chief Catchings will be able to answer that last question, I think to your point about the dispatch, I think that's one of the things we're looking at. We're also looking at substitutes because sometimes our substitutes are certified. So we're going through the substitute pool as well to see if there's shifting we can do. Our priority is to get certified teachers into the classroom. That's always going to be. So the hiring will continue. In the meantime, we're looking at temporary ways to be able to stand them up. I think if Chief Catchings could just identify the actual number right now that we're still working to fill. And I think it's on average, it might be one per school, and then there's a few schools that have a deeper number. We know in the CTE side of the house that that is definitely an area, and it's statewide as well, of people coming out of industry to be able to be certified to teach in our book back.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. So we continue to hover around 200 vacancies for teachers. I think one thing that's important to point out is that we've reached a contractual deadline. So most most of our teacher vacancies have now converted to long-term sub-vacancies. So that's just a technicality that kind of makes this a little bit difficult to continue to report out on. But I did get a snapshot that I'm happy to share with you, you know, from my data team that I can literally push. As far as uncertified educators, we right now have just under 400 provisional folks who are in the waiver process, or excuse me, I shouldn't even say provisional. There are about 400 people.
So the hiring will continue. In the meantime, we're looking at temporary, um, temporary ways to be able to stand them up. I think if Chief Catchings could just identify the actual number right now that we're still working to fill. And I think it's on average, a cut like it might be one per school. And then there's a few schools that have a deeper number. We know in the CTE side of the house. That that is, um, that is definitely, uh, an area and it's statewide as well. Um, of people coming out of industry to be able to be certified to teach in our book back.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Superintendent. Um, so we continue to hover around two hundred vacancies for teachers. I think. One thing that's important to point out is that we've reached a contractual deadline, so most. Uh, most of our teacher vacancies have now converted to long-term sub-vacancies, so that's just a technicality that kind of makes this a little bit. Difficult to continue to report out on, but I did get a snapshot that I'm happy to share with you, um. You know, from my data team that I can literally push. Um, as far as uncertified educators. We right now have, um, just under four hundred provisional folks who are. Um, in the waiver process, or excuse me, I shouldn't even say provisional. There are about four hundred people because you could technically be in a waiver status for. A permanent teacher for your subject. I think what's really important to point out about. The notices that had gone out, and I want to slow down, I'm sorry. Um, I think what's really important to point out about the notices is that the notice is sent down to the subject level. Um, so for example, I received a letter. Uh, my son is at the Chittick. Um, his teacher is fully licensed inclusion teacher. However, she is the teacher of record for his physical education class. And so, no, she's an inclusion teacher, so she has all the certifications for that. Also listed on record as, uh, his PE teacher. So a letter came home to me to say that his. Subject area for PE did not have a licensed teacher in it. Um, and so, uh, those are some nuances that we have to get that granular when we send down to the notification of. The subject area. So it's not as clean as just how many unlicensed teachers, like one for one. Uh, but more about the subject area, which is a little bit deeper of a data dive that, um, we'll have to dig into to get you. Is it actually an, an educator, uh, for the like almost entire roster of a school, or is it just, uh, for. Per subject area, which is, don't get me wrong, equally as concerning, but slightly a bit of a nuance.
It would be, thank you for that and the transparency there. It would be helpful. To understand it even broken down that way, and I think probably, I, 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 I may be alone in this, but I suspect. For most families, like they are, we, I am most concerned about sort of core subject teachers and making sure my kid has. A certified teacher in that area. And so I become less concerned, though important, about some of the extras, and I want to make sure. They're getting just the floor of the, the experience. And so maybe even breaking it down in that way, so we can sort of look at both and, you know, full respect to the CTE programming as well, with a recognition. Of the national shortage, shortage in those roles. Um. But really sort of thinking about, you know, is my child receiving math instruction from someone who knows math instruction?
Got it. But I will take away from this is just, uh, a data dive that just looks into sorts. I'll give you all subjects, obviously, but the core, um, of of education, so we could sort of get to what that is, but. Again, I think, um, because we do it by class and subject area, it's very broad, many people got notices. But to your point, uh, we should take a look at the core and what that impact really is.
Yeah. And I will say that, um. We will be, so this is something we're actively working on, but we haven't, uh. Contacted all of the people yet that are impacted. Um, but there will be additional rollout for us of people who are certified. Into the class, into those classrooms.
That's great. From central positions or through a new hire, sorry?
Uh, a combination.
Okay, great. Like, maybe in the new year, we can hear more about that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Alkins.
Yes, thank you actually for, for that. Um. My question was actually, um, sort of related to what we have talked about with respect to the, to the Green New Deal. And sort of the, the rollout for families. I know we had spoken about. How families would be notified of sort of changes within their own school, and I know we, I think at one point I'd. Discuss somewhat of a dashboard being made available for families to sort of track the progress. When should we expect changes? We know this is. Going to be years of a process, but so that families are kept in the loop so that they can understand. When and where they can start to expect those types of changes.
So I think, uh, see, I think Deputy DePina, um, we're spearheading Green New Deal. Um, I think it's been very good conversations with the families about the mergers. And our decision to both delay and to deepen the process. Um, the, the dashboard, though, uh, Sam, any update on that?
My understanding is that, um, uh, the communications team is working closely with our city colleagues to get information from our. Operations divisions to help inform, um, some of the data that we, uh, have and provide to, to, to create the website. So that's currently in process is my understanding. So it will be up soon. We're in the process of making sure the systems that we use to capture the data in our operation department are, um, um, presented in a way that's digestible for families.
Thank you. Ms. LaPera.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and apologies, um, Superintendent, if you already addressed this, um. Uh, with some, I know Brandon made some comments, but I'm not sure if the question was asked and if it was answered. My kids were distracting, so apologies for that. But I'm curious around, uh, timeline for when we can expect to see an implementation plan. As it relates to the, um, recommendations from the Council of Great City Schools related to our special education needs.
Yeah, so, um, I know, uh, that Dr. Chen is working on this. Um, there is overlap. As you know, from the recommendations between special education and the OMME, um, strategic plan. And so, uh, both of those are underneath, um, Linda. And I know that we've been assembling committees, including one now for multilingual learners with disabilities, as we start to map things out. Um, we, the senior advisor who is going to be, um, tasked with this, they're in the late stages of that hire. Uh, so Deputy Chen, is there anything, uh, you can conjecture? Um, you know, in terms of the, the new year of when we might next update, um, school committee on the actual checkoffs of the plan?
Sure. Um, as, uh, the superintendent mentioned, there's an overlap between the OM strategic plan and also parts of the. Transportation and safety reports that also include students with disabilities. So we are anticipating that we, uh, there, there are certainly things that are happening, but we want to provide you with the full report. Section by section, and so those are the things that we're trying to. Finish up, and I think we'll work with the chair in determining when we can come back. To you in session on this, um, in addition to, uh, I think, I'm assuming we want to do more than just a. An update through a memo, but just something that we would have in a, in a future meeting.
Um, thank you. I think related to this, my other question was also when we could expect an update, um, for our Office of Multilingual Learners. Um, and the plan that's being worked on, uh, for execution there.
So actually, it would make sense to do both in the new year. So that you have both because there's, there's definitely some connections between the two. You'll also start to hear some of it actually during our budget report as well. You'll see the beginnings of some of the things that we will be implementing. Um, based on the investments that we're making for that, or that the, based on the investments that we are proposing for the next school year.
Thank you.
And Deputy Chen, any, um, just the senior advisor position, just given the importance to it. Um, of the, the planning and the mapping out, um, any update on the projection for hire?
Yes, so we have, um, been in the process of interviewing candidates, and we expect to have that closed out. Before we leave, uh, for this, this calendar year.
Great.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez. Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez.
All right, I was finding my unmute. Uh, my last question tonight is Superintendent, I know you had. Discussed, and we've discussed it previously, the priority around addressing chronic absenteeism. I'm curious if we've seen a decline, sort of what's the current state of play and what strategies are you seeing? And, and maybe you'll begin to address in the budget exercise this evening, some things that we're looking to deploy for the future.
Yeah, so through you, um, through your chair. So this is a complex one because of the sickness issue. You know, i- it's, we're telling students to stay home when they're sick, and they are. But as a result, you know, to, um, Ms. Palanca Garcia's point earlier, we have students missing bigger chunks of time. So it's very hard, last year's data and this year's data to separate out. Um, what is sickness versus what is unexcused absence? That said, we are tracking it, we're looking at it. Um, I think we're running slightly better than we were last year. But we aren't through the winter yet, and that's when we saw the real dip last year. Um, in terms of the strategy pieces, I think, you know, on the, on the good news front. The SST teams are fully functional in the schools. There's been a lot of, um, training and attention placed with social workers. And involvement on those teams, lots of outreach to students of the ones we know are not related to illness. Um, trying to get connected to supportive programs. Um, certainly for students in the older grades. Where the chronic absenteeism has been a long-term problem, connecting them through the re-engagement center. The, the re-engagement center, instead of being a one-point access you have to go to, has been holding sessions at the schools. Talking with the students based on that attendance, kind of disengagement and figuring out what other kinds of programming. We could move that student to with the parent and the student that could allow them to restart. So we've had some words of seventy, seventy-five students participate in that. Which is really good news because when it was single point of entry, the rec was not getting those students walking in. And we don't want the student to have dropped out in order for that to happen. And we know chronic absenteeism is the first indicator of that process. So, um, Chief Kelton has really been working closely with social workers. I think the MTSS process. That we're going to be talking about, the deep invent, um, investment in interventions, because in our district. We had developed out a good menu of social emotional interventions, but not necessarily academic. And so this has got to be hand in hand, so that when students go to an SST team, the MTSS process is being used faithfully. We're trying a tiered approach, which includes strong academic intervention for the student in a variety of ways. Reading support, math support, so that the student is able to both catch up. And to be able to get the social emotional support they need to become on grade level. So I, you know, this will be data that post the winter, I think we can look at, and we are coding the COVID stuff at least. So we'll at least know when students are out for longevity because of COVID. Um, but I think the, uh, I think the, the, the challenge right now is all the other stuff with sickness. As to why students need to be out right now. So, um, we'll give more in the new year in terms of trying to break those two out. But the good news is we are still moving forward with the strategies, right, and with the interventions. And that ultimately is going to, to help all of our students.
And just one more thing here, are there any bright spots or schools that you're seeing sort of buck the trend? Um, that we can learn from that, you know, or like every other school, they're managing sickness, but they're, they're bringing back. The, the students who, uh, maybe didn't start the school year with us, you know, like I remember at the principal, that was sort of that. Those kids who like weren't arriving before October. A different level of priority. Um, and like, you know, is there any there there that you?
No, I definitely think there are. There's, you know, I think, uh, I think Brighton, I think Charles Down. Um, you know, they, they have developed, um, internal educational options for students. And so what they're able to do is when a student is off tech, is kind of like off track. They're able to offer that student, it could be flexibility of schedule, it could be, uh, reading recovery, it could be whatever it is. And they're able to kind of schedule that student in a way that's very different, that allows the student to reengage. So I definitely think we're seeing that piece. Um, in, in, schools are paying attention to their attendance. So they're noticing when they're getting a blip. I was having a conversation with a school that typically has like very ninety-two, ninety-three percent attendance. It's, it's a high school. And they were actually making note that over the course of last three to four weeks, they've seen that dip because of the sickness. So they knew right where they were, eighty-eight percent. They knew who the students were. And that's, that's a lot of this is, who are your students? Who are the students that are coming? Who are the students that are not? Why are they not coming? And then you really lay the process in. So that is the goal that by the end of this year. Those structures are working in our schools. MTSS and MTS training begins in, 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 I would say earnest. Come summer, and we're able to kind of have the working structures that we know we need to support, to support our students.
That's great. And then just clarifying question from my last round, you mentioned twenty-two schools. Are those schools? Who are sort of first in line to do this, uh, sort of strategic planning around how to roll out integration? In their communities, is that, is that understanding?
These were, these were schools that put forward through an application process to special education and to academics. Um, to be included in the first cohort. They range, some of the schools have been doing inclusion. Um, but again, we're trying to ascertain the models that they're using. And looking at the outcomes that they're getting. Um, a school might say like, we're inclusive, but then when you actually look at the, the outcome data. The students may or may not be accessing in the way they can, and they may not be succeeding. So we're trying to look at all of that right now in this cohort of schools. And most importantly, to look at how they're doing it. So we actually just had four of them in, and we did a deep dive on budget with them. So how are they leveraging SIR? What are they doing different than they've done before in order to have an inclusive model? And it was pretty fascinating to see the range of like how they were solving. Um, you know, the, the problem before of having, uh, any student with disability access in their school. Um, and so we look to learn from that cohort and have them learn from each other. Doctor Chen, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add about that group?
Yes, um, so they represent, um. Uh, grades, uh, pre-K through eight. And as the superintendent said, uh, we have a cross-section of different types of schools and experiences. So that we can also learn from them and en- ensure that we have, we, we are helping them get ready for. Um, this is so wonderfully distracting, by the way.
Welcome to my life, I'm sorry.
Um, so we are, we're ensuring that there's readiness. For moving to a fully inclusive setting as well, meaning having strong tier-one systems in place for SST and MTSS. So that that transition can be made in meaningful ways, not just about additional funds, that, for instance, in a budget. So what's also great about these teams is they have inclusion planning teams that include. A cross-section of the community. There are family members, there are, um, teachers, administrators. All part of this team, family, um, support, um, workers as well. So. We've had really good, um, feedback from these cohorts where they're learning together and essentially planning together for the school.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, cutie.
Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the rest of the members have spoken now, so I do, um. I, I did have a, a number of questions after the superintendent's report, and thank you, Superintendent, for that report, but luckily with the. The engagement and the vigor of my fellow colleagues' questions. Uh, most of what I had, um, has been covered. Uh, so I'd rather just make three quick comments. I do have enrollment questions, but I'll hold that off for the budget discussion that is pending later tonight, so. Um, just three quick more comments than the questions. Um, Superintendent, like others mentioned, I am looking forward to hopefully early in the new year, Madam Chair, a presentation. On where you stand on implementation on special ed and. Um, agree that it's about the intersection of the council report, the DESI focus. Um, and your findings now that you've been superintendent for a while and, and where you plan to go. And I know it is about making some hires as well, but. This is about, you know, the impact to students that are in our system right now, so the sense of urgency on this is real. Um, and I know the chair and I, and, and I'm sure some of my fellow members have been receiving, um, feedback from parents who have been reaching out. Because this has become a discussion point and giving their feedback of. Their experience as a parent in the system as well, so. Um, really want to see, I hope there's a, I know there is, but I, I want to see it manifest in. And update to us about how you feel about the recommendations, what you're going to be doing, et cetera. So that, that's one issue. The other is you did bring up about transportation as well, and thank you for referencing. Um, the article that, that we all read, the article, the letter from the Finance, uh, Commission. Um, which did raise some questions. I know you're not at the point of presenting something to us, and I know we'll be doing that in the new year. And looking at that contract, but. It is going to be important to have insurances that it was a robust RFP, or I think you called it I, IFP. IFP process and that, you know, you did look closely at the questions that were raised. I appreciate that you mentioned that you're going to be mating with the Finance Commission Chair. Um, and discussing the concerns raised because this is such an important contract. Transportation has been such a challenge for us. And I look forward, when you do get the point to make a recommendation to us, of really understanding what the alternatives you looked at, not only trying to bring in. You know, the most number of companies to bid, but also did you look at alternative ways of maybe breaking it up into smaller? Ways to do it, et cetera. So, um, transportation is obviously a key area for our parents and this contract. Along with our contract with our Bus Drivers Union are the two ways that this body. Uh, influences, uh, that work. And so. I really look forward to having a discussion about that, and I know you want to do some more. I really look forward to having a discussion about that. And I know you want to do some more clearly by your comments tonight before you were at a point making that presentation to us.
Yeah, no, I really, I appreciate that. And I I think, you know, this holds true for any of these areas, special education, school safety, transportation, you know, we, we can no longer Band-Aid and look for easy solutions in these areas because that's exactly why we are where we are. That's what has ha- kind of happened as we've kicked the can kind of down the road is to get the quick fix. That's a surface fix. These are all systems issues. And as such, you have to dismantle the system and you have to rebuild the system based on what is needed. And so that is the work and it is, it is, it has to be urgent and it has to be comprehensive and it has to be thoughtful. And it is adaptive work, which means that it really shakes things up. So I think, you know, to Dr. Chen's point, it would be a lot for a system to get one of these reports in a given year. To get three of these reports, all that have interconnectivity to them, means we have to be very thoughtful that when we're making deep change here, that that deep change gets accounted for over here at the same time that we're changing the system. And I think that's what Dr. Hart was referring to when he said, you know, it's taken decades to get here. You're going to really need to dig down and unpack this stuff so that you can actually fix it. Because most of it is tenants and is rooted, you know, in deep systems in BPS. So, you know, that's what, that is the work that as a team, we are looking forward and are doing so that what the solutions that we bring to school committee and to the community are solutions that are not going a year from now to to basically just reset.
I understand that and I and I do appreciate it how deep seated the problems are and the approach you're taking on this and also recognizing you're in the role of what? Three months now, right? So more importantly, I appreciate how you are trying to build consensus while changing culture within the bowling building to get ownership across sector, have people own it and believe it. So this is not just the superintendent making a decision that there is a history in BPS that of folks who will yes a superintendent to death waiting for a new superintendent to come along. So I understand the work you're doing to change culture and appreciate that. I do think it is very important that you continue to give updates like this so that out of sight can be out of mind in Boston very easily. Or as I also say, in the absence of information, misinformation misinformation can flourish. And so people need to hear on this and on a range of topics of the work that you are doing, even if you are saying to us, be patient, this is in progress. I'll close because I am out of time. I'll I'll close, Madam Chair, joining the chorus of my colleagues and in thanking you for your willingness to reapply and for the service to this committee and and to our district and to our city. I do happen to work closely with you, so I have a unique seat in seeing the incredible amount of time and energy and attention and dedication you provide to this role. Many don't know, you sat in every BTU or just about every BTU negotiating session, which was not typically done by chairs in the past. The amount of time, the meetings that you attend and the value you bring to this is is just incredible and you are impacting the educational opportunities for the U of this city. And it is an honor and a pleasure to work with you and I'm delighted the mayor saw that and reappointed you and a fellow member Quark Tron, who also brings an incredible amount of perspective. The beauty of this committee is we each bring different perspectives and experiences and and when Mr. Tron speaks up about civil rights, among other topics, I certainly sit up and listen. So thank him and thank you for your willingness to serve again.
Thank you so much. Yeah, as I said, I was originally looking forward tonight as being my last school committee meeting. And so it's it's interesting that we were launched into this next few years. I look forward to the work. I I am happy that we have a very strong committee of seven very committed people. So and we all know that, you know, stability is one thing that we need. And hopefully, as we move into the new year, we can begin a new year together, digging deep, not being afraid of the issues that we need to discuss and moving forward, you know, with the chorus of we're here to improve student outcomes. And so tha- that's why I'm here. I know that's why we're all here and looking forward to more work on this in the the new year. Most of my questions to have been answered superintendent, but I have two quick things. One, it's more of a question. I know that we are, you know, going to be talking about registration for summer programs in March, which is early for us, but in general, within the community, a lot of registration for camp programs begins in January. And I'm wondering, even though I know we do not know all of the specifics of individual programs, is there a message that we can make sure all of our parents have around things like dates or that we are going to be offering full day programming? You know, with surround care aware or, you know, and, you know, the kinds of things. So at least people could plan if they don't know exactly what. But, you know, they could at least understand that there is something coming and I can't wait because I've, you know, talked to so many parents over time who'll say, I didn't know if it was going to be anything. I really wish I could have applied, you know, but news came too late.
Right. So three chairs, so this is a great suggestion. I think, you know, in in any given summer, there's probably eighty percent of the programs that are the same programs we offer. There's no reason that we can't with those programs where we know we're going to run them, be able to share that information well in advance to parents to say these are going to happen. I think for the new ones that we're still working on details, we're still working on the commitments. We can certainly preview them and let folks know that that's what we're going to be working toward. But at the minimum, we can at least give the information so families can plan. So that's a great, it's a great suggestion. I know that Chief Snyder's on here and Deputy Baris is on here and they'll make note of that.
Right. Do we have a goal in terms of the percentage of our students that we really want to see in summer programming with us? And at this point in time, would schools or or teachers know of specific students that they would want to encourage their families to, you know, make sure that they are enrolled in a particular kind of program? So again, we can be a bit more proactive.
So yes, through your chair. So yes, I mean, in typical in in a in a school come mid-year, you have a good sense of the students that could benefit with additional enrichment. I think in our transformation schools, we'll be running acceleration academies during the vacation months. Students that would be attending those would also be students that would, you know, could benefit from additional enrichment. So that's information that with the student support process, and it's why it's so important to have that process working. We should be able to get the lists of students and do a much better job matching students and opportunity than we've been able to do in the past. I think additionally, one of the things that is it's always in in every district a challenge, but making sure that the programs have capacity for students like our MLE students, for so a linguistic capacity, but also for special education students to be able to serve from an inclusive perspective. That's the part that we're also trying to build out and to add into the program. So some of the conversations with Boston and beyond is how can we through our staffing, how can we complement those programs to be able to add that extra capacity? So I think, you know, as I, as I said before, I think we're trying to look at it both in the number and the volume, but also that it's the whole and making sure that the programs for the students that most need them, that those students are getting that access. And that's the match, that's the magic that happens and needs to happen for the summer month. So, you know, we we will do some percentage over and above. You know, ten percent is probably like a good number over and above what we did for seat capacity when we look across all the grade levels. But most importantly is what are we seeing for the accessibility? So when we look at our numbers across the district of who participated, are we seeing this percentage of special education students and the percentage of MLE students getting access to those seats?
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My other question is sort of following up on some of the issues that we've talked about, about having teachers that are not necessarily certified teaching in some subject matter. And I know that it's 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 come to my attention from several issues, particularly thinking about now the fact that both science and social studies are requirements as part of the the grades that are being presented for exam school admissions, parents are concerned when they learn that their child's science teacher may not be, you know, qualified and if their child is having trouble, that it's going to impede their grade point average, et cetera. And so, you know, how are we making sure that we've got the best teachers in front of all students, but particularly in critical areas where we know that it's going to have a different level of impact upon a student's outcomes?
Sure. So three chairs. So I think as as Chief Catchings talked about, the core subject areas and the subject areas that we're trying to fill first, we have a few things that we're working on that will be for the beginning of the new year, but it involves having conversations with staff, which have not been had yet to do some reassignment. And so, you know, we'll really be looking at the core subject areas to make sure we're prioritizing any of the teachers that have certifications in those areas to put them in front of students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I want to thank you all for all of your questions. And if there are no, if there's no further discussion, I want to entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Miss Sullivan, will you please call the room?
Thank you, Dr. Alkins.
Yes.
Mr. Cudad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPara?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Before we move on to general public comment, the committee will receive a report on tentative collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and the Administrative Guild, SEIU Local Eight 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 and three supplemental appropriation requests. I'll now turn it over to Labor Relations Director Jeremiah Hassan for the report. And I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me repeat the sentiments of the fellow committee members and congratulate you on your reappointment. I'm excited to continue working with you as we hopefully resolve the rest of our collective bargaining agreements quickly in the new year. So with that, I will, or I'm excited to present the tentative agreement between the bargaining team for the Boston School Committee and the Administrative Guild, SEIU Local Eight Eight Eight. So this is a straightforward agreement. It's totals four years. It'll actually be two collective bargaining agreement extensions. The first is two years and it's for ju- just wages only. And there is a general wage increase of two percent in fiscal year twenty one and a general wage increase of two point five percent in fiscal year twenty two. In FY twenty two, there is also a lump sum COVID related bonus of one thousand dollars to active members during that year. The second agreement is again wages only and it's for two point five percent increases in fiscal year two thousand twenty three and two point five percent in fiscal year two thousand twenty four. In order to support this collective bargaining agreement in FY twenty three, I'm also requesting that you vote in favor of a request to the City Council for supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of seven hundred and three thousand dollars, seven hundred and three, nine hundred and thirty nine dollars.
Thank you.
Again, it was very straightforward, so I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, I just want to say thank you again for your report and thank you to you and your team for your work on reaching these agreements. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Any questions, comments? If not, I thank you again for your report and the committee looks forward to taking a vote on several of these proposals later this evening. Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Miss Sullivan?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I I I did not present on the supplemental appropriation requests for the other two collective bargaining agreements. Sorry, that was, I kept it just. And I guess before I move on to the other requests, I just want to thank the bargaining team for the guild for all their hard work in reaching an agreement and the support that we got from City Hall was was very helpful to get to get to an agreement. So before public comment, I'm also presenting and requesting the vote in favor of a request to City Council for supplemental appropriation in FY twenty three to support the recently approved tentative, the recently approved collective bargaining agreement with the Custodians Union. And we are requesting from City Council supplemental appropriation in the amount of one million, two hundred and eighty three thousand, four hundred and eighty six dollars. And in in order to support the recently ratified and approved agreement with the Patrolman's Association, we are requesting a supplemental appropriation request for fiscal year twenty three in the amount of one hundred and sixty four thousand, four hundred and forty eight dollars.
Again, I will open it up to questions. Okay, carry none. Again, we look forward to taking action later on some of these agreements and thank you. Now we will move on to public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have eleven speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak and I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. And please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name used to sign up for public comments. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with Sharon Hinton, followed by Robert Jenkins, Ruby Reyes and Edith Bazile. If you can, please raise your hands virtually. Okay, Sharon has not signed into the meeting. Mr. Jenkins?
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, School Committee Chair Robinson and School Committee Members as well as Superintendent Skipper and others. Thank you very much. I'm going to be very brief today. One of the reasons why I'm on the call today is that myself and Mr. Hamid Garuni from the Madison Park alumni, I mean, from the Madison Park School. Mr. Garuni has been there, it's been there over thirty plus years at Madison Park and we're advocating for the dedicated spaces of Cardinal Hall being renamed. Mr. Charles McAfee Hall and the Student Center being named in honor of Mr. Jose. and the Student Center being named in honor of Mr. Jose Solis. Both these educators were at the school at Madison for a long number of years. Mr. McAfee was there for well over 16-plus years. Mr. Solis was there for over four years, retiring after a year and a half, and he still spends his time at the, at Madison Park. He's, he's served, uh, he's served thousands of alumni members in which I represent as being president of the Madison Park Alumni Association. And we would like that, it's going to be later on in the meeting, to make sure those dedicated spaces are named appropriately and approved. Also, in Matterpan, for the Matterpan Community Room, the late Mrs. Gloria Kincaid, who was a mainstay at the Matter Hunt for many years. The Matter Hunt was very, is very near and dear to me because I've been a, been a member there since 1976 when the school was first built as a school and a community center by then Mayor Kevin White. Says, sir, Mrs. Kincaid and her former husband, the late Gareth Kincaid, were very instrumental in community meetings at the Matter Hunt during the whole time at Matter Hunt as, as far as community and the school. And there's a dedicated space that has already also been put to be dedicated in her honor. I would also like to add that, uh, I definitely like the districts, uh, and the city of Boston and other city agencies in regards to the New Green Deal on how they are involving the community and being transparent and letting us know during this process. Again, we've, unfortunately, every time we've had transitions of whether it's a mayor or a superintendent, I feel very, very happy that this process is going to let the community get involved. But I would like to caution.
20 seconds.
We need to get more major stakeholders involved, meaning the BTU, teachers, and students input. All of them. I mean, you know, we have to get our kids, our, you know, students involved because these spaces that they have to learn, uh, and they have to be adequate and equitable for them. So I like where we're going. I will continue to, uh, be, uh, an advocate. And one other thing that you all have already received from me, our sports programs, you know, for our, for our students and social emotional learning and after-school programming.
Excuse me, Ms. Jenkins? I'm sorry. Could you please wrap up?
I am, I will be finished right then and there, Ms. Sullivan. I am done. Thank you very much for your time. Stay warm.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
Uh, hello, my name is Ruby Reyes. I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. At the Monday Community Equity Roundtable, the introduction of 18 new positions known as Student Support Community Connections Coordinators was introduced. These new positions would be responsible for following a list of students who are at risk of becoming the victim or perpetrator of community violence. What is even more disturbing is that these positions highlight the information sharing that will happen between these positions, Boston Police, MBA Transit Police. The position even calls for weekly meetings with the district attorney's office. This is unjustifiable targeting of students that is masking racism. This also feeds the unnerving pattern of Superintendent Skipper investing in punitive school safety measures rather than investing in 21st century solutions such as increasing the capacity and staffing of the Restorative Justice Office, which has traditionally had two to three full-time staff for the entire district. These 18 positions are pushing the district backwards. The district should be working towards a place that prioritizes restorative justice, creating healthy school climates, hiring more caring adults whose purpose is social emotional supports, especially with the rollout of inclusion rather than sharing information. Three years into the pandemic, HVAC systems need, still need to be installed. How can BPS leadership justify $30 million for cameras and 18 new positions that will share targeted student information with BPD Transit Police and DA's office when families and students have continually asked for additional social, emotional, and mental health support, academic support, and facilities with clean air? I hope this school committee redirects these misguided decisions. In 2018, an East Boston student was deported from a minor infraction because of information sharing with the Boston Police Department through the BRIC list or the Boston Region, Regional Information Center, a list of young people, mostly Black and Latino young men and boys, who are quote-unquote "gang-affiliated." How this list is determined has not been transparent. These, this list sounds exactly like this position, these 18 positions. This prompted a review of the BPS information sharing policy. The approval of the revised policy was, was not supported by those who were involved in recreating it because it did not ensure that students were safe. There are still very clear holes in the protection of students. With the installation of new cameras, there has not been a clarification on where this information will be stored or who it will be shared with. BPS Central Office has a long and very recent history of falling short in prioritizing the protection of students. Gang gambling with the possible incarceration or deportation of more BPS students is something that should not be considered, especially if we are supposed to trust the central office to suddenly get it right after many years of getting it wrong. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Edith Bazile, followed by Becky Rindell, Michael Heischmann, Lauren Peter, and Ariel Adelman. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Ms. Bazile?
Thank you so much. My name is Edith Bazile. During COVID, BPS added us, a nurse in social work in every school, family liaison in every building, 75 additional school psychologists, ran school-based equity roundtables, promised COVID compensatory services, increased work-related community-based, work with community-based providers and partners, all while vowing to become an anti-racist district. I am glad that Superintendent Skipper stated tonight that she is committed to adding more social workers and social emotional supports for our students. But we have no data on how the previous supports have made a difference, and that would be helpful to have. Now BPS is proposing 18 positions called Community Supports Connection Coordinators with a focus on violence prevention. I have many concerns and questions. The job description, description targets, quote, "youth at risk of being gang-involved," end of quote. What is the metric for determining this? The minimum requirement of these jobs is, quote, "the ability to understand and work pro- du- work productively with youth in their families who are high-risk for being perpetrators or victims of community violence." What is the criteria for this? It further states, quote, "The role is expected to work the majority of their school hours during the school day," end of quote. Will they be pulling students out of class? It goes on. "The applicant must understand, quote, trends and culture that contribute to violence," end of quote. What does this mean? Why isn't a high school diploma required for these jobs? There are no educational requirements. And where is the funding coming from for these positions? These roles will surveil students at MBTA stations and in the community. They'll collaborate with transit police, meet regularly with the DA's office, the mayor's office of public safety, Boston Police, and the Office of Black Male Student Advancement. Has the racial equity planning tool been used? Madam Chair, we know who will be targeted. These roles reinforce stereotypes of black males as violent, dangerous. It will stalk the social media and look at them and track them as if they are on probation. There is only one restorative justice worker in BPS. Why? We know that restorative justice empowers students, promotes peer mentoring and leadership to resolve conflicts on their own in small peer medi- mediated groups to talk, ask questions, raise issues, and resolve grievances. Why not expand this and give students and families impacted input on how these new positions should be constructed? Proactive prevention, community-based student engagement, and multi-tiered supportive su- systems of support does not mean more racial profiling, surveillance, and policing of Black students. Black students need an achievement agenda now. Will BPS address that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Becky Rindell.
Hi, everyone. My name is Becky Rindell. I'm an attorney at Greater Boston Legal Services. Um, I live in Cambridge, Massachusetts, but I work in the West End of Boston, and I serve low-income families, primarily Black and Brown students in the Boston public school system. I want to thank the school committee, Superintendent Skipper, and the family and community on this call. I want to just let everyone know, GBLS is a civil legal aid organization. We assist some of Greater Boston's poorest and most vulnerable residents with basic life necessities. I'm here today because my project is the School-to-Prison Pipeline Intervention Project. We work to dismantle the systems that drive students of color and students with disabilities out of school and into repeated incarceration. Fundamentally, my work is about ensuring students have equitable access to their education in safe and supportive schools with appropriate support. I'm here today on behalf of myself and my clients, um, and other advocates in Boston about this urgent and alarming proposal unveiled this week for these community, at the Community Equity Roundtables for these Community Connections staffs. The job proposals say that they will surveil and monitor BPS students identified as gang-involved or at risk of gang involvement. A proposal that will inevitably disproportionately harm students of color, primarily Black and Latinx students, immigrant students, and students with disabilities. Some of the most alarming aspects of the proposal include that BPS will increase communication sharing and coordination with BPD, that BPS will use unknown criteria to identify students that are gang-affiliated or at risk, and these students will be more heavily monitored, not just at school, which would already be alarming, but on social media, at T-Stops, and as they head home from school. This proposal to create a list of gang-involved youth to heavily monitor them and to report them to the police is too similar to the practice of the BPD gang database. Inevitably, these databases will disproportionately identify Black and Latinx students through the use of flawed and unreliable data and unsubstantiated reports and push these students out of school. Every member of BPS deserves schools that are safe and affirming learning environments. That includes staff, that includes students. Given what we know about the School-to-Prison Pipeline, we urge you to immediately halt the current proposal and engage in community-focused process to build meaningful school safety. We urge you to build truly safe schools through effective and inclusive special education, expanding after-school programming. We've heard about that tonight. Uh, meaningful restorative justice, expanding the arts, music, athletic programs, peer mentoring, job placement programs, everything that I've heard this will emphasize tonight, we really need to torn, turn towards these efforts. We urge the districts to move away from the current proposal and instead turn to trauma-informed approaches. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Heischmann.
Mike Heischmann, Dorchester Beja. It would be helpful to know the dates of the school committee meetings in January. Thank you for naming a school after Mel King. Mel was a wonderful person and a great leader and teacher. On August the 24th, 15 high-ranking retired BPS educators of color had sent a letter to the new superintendent protesting against the targeting harassment and firing of anti-racist Black and Brown Central Office leaders. The acting superintendent had placed five Central Office leaders of color on administrative leave. Ms. Skipper had to approve those actions. Until we have a significant presence of anti-racist Black and Brown Central Office leaders at the top of the hierarchy, additional harm to our school system would take place. We cannot patiently wait for months until the investigative lawyer sends her report before positive actions are taken. The public has a right to know now what positive steps have already been taken, if any. Ms. Skipper's plans to alleviate the harm already done and her plans to divi- diversify her top leadership team. Staff and budget cuts to Black and Brown educators should be restored and their offices be moved out of the basement and closer to the white hierarchy who is right, currently running the show. At our next meeting, the superintendent must present to the school committee and the public an organizational demographic chart of the central office. This chart should compare Dr. Casilius's team to the one that Ms. Skipper has today. We cannot have an excellent school system unless and until we have Black and Brown anti-racist leaders at the top of a diverse central office leadership. I strongly oppose the proposal that would hire 18 new Community Connection coordinators and a Community Violence Response Advisor. This proposal intends to significantly increase their surveillance of BPS students. This would disproportionately harm students of color and students with disabilities. Has there been an equity analysis of this proposal? Instead of this punitive proposal, invest in restorative justice and other measures that could, that would promote safe and healthy school climates. The most important mission of the BPS is to protect the health and safety of our children. We are still in a public health emergency. I implore you to follow the excellent advice of Famcoza. Thank you, Ms. Skipper, for including COVID-19 in your report today. Please continue to do those, do this at every meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Peter.
Hello, my name is Lauren Peter. I'm a Roslyn Del resident and proud mom to a Sumner third grader. We summon our parents that have come before you for many months now to tell our school story, to tell the history of unmet needs and broken promises. I'm asking today for a commitment from BPS for some simple things. A commitment to schedule several meetings over the next, several community meetings over the next several months and don't cancel them. I know my schedule for the next month and the following two are pretty much down to the minute, and I only have one job. Please be respectful of sacrifices that people make to get to you. Commit to connecting with us, connecting us with the design team and the architects so that we can work as a community to build the best renovated Irving building possible. Commit to showing and tell, and telling the Shaw and Taylor communities what kind of renovations they can expect out of a merged community. The Rosie Connect, Rosie community can expect a renovated Irving with a gym and a cafeteria. What about these schools? Commit to sharing the equity analysis and the expected impact on our students with the Sumner, Philbrick, Shaw, and Taylor. We, as parents and educators and support staff, need this information, need this to inform how we shape our communities too. Our SSD meets tomorrow. Just think how much better this meeting could be structured if we knew of, of a, of a specific need for the following few months. As we head into school choice and budget season, commit to, to those mitigation factors that are showing up in the bottom line of our school budgets. In closing, um, please commit to being transparently connected with our community. Commit to community meetings in Spanish and Haitian Creole with our school. Commit to meetings in Spanish and Portuguese with the Philbrick community. Commit to telling us when the, the renovation meeting that's supposed to happen with our community next week. Tell us about it as soon as possible so that we can make arrangements because next week's kind of busy for most people. Just tell us what you're going to do so that we can be the best partners because you really want to be here for you. We really want to be the people who are telling everyone how great BPS is because that we truly believe. telling everyone how great BPS is, because that, we truly believe that, we truly believe that BPS is the best place for our students, but we really, really want our students to have all the things that they need to succeed, and we want to make sure that the following years are not crazy with upheaval for our students. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ariel Adelman, followed by Cheryl Buckman, Betsy Yoshimura, and Suleika Soto. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Ariel?
Hello. My name is Ariel Adelman. I am a health and disability policy researcher, and I live in Brighton. It is imperative that BPS implement a universal test and mask mandate. As a disabled person, I grew up missing tons of school. I went to the hospital for illnesses that could have easily been prevented by simple policies like masking and testing. I can't imagine what it's like to be a high-risk child at school now that such a deadly disabling virus is omnipresent and existing policies are violating their civil rights to a free and public education. I can't imagine what it's like to be any child watching the adults in their lives do absolutely nothing to save their lives and prevent post-viral disability. The data clearly show that it is well past time to implement a universal mask mandate and pooled PCR testing requirement, especially given insufficient testing infrastructure. This is particularly important for the return after winter recess because of the inevitable tsunami of infections following the holidays. In response to a previous comment, there is absolutely no legitimate evidence that masking has any negative impacts on children when you control for factors like parent death, disability, poverty, and other social determinants of health. I also want to point out that referring to cough etiquette as an appropriate mitigation shows a clear lack of understanding of how airborne diseases like COVID-19 spread. Scientific consensus is clear. Masking with high-quality respirators prevents the spread of airborne diseases like COVID-19, flu, and RSV. We need to prevent the spread of disease as much as possible so that children have a fair shot at a long, healthy life, and because our healthcare system is in a state of collapse. As of December 2nd, 96.5% of ICU beds are full. Just last month, the ICU at MGH was at 150% capacity. Pediatric surgeries were canceled as a result of the surge in hospital admissions. Pediatricians in Boston and beyond are clear that they do not have the resources to treat every sick child. BPS also needs teachers in the classroom, but they can't be in the classroom if they're sick, hospitalized, or dead. The answer is to reduce the number of infections through common sense mitigations like masking, testing, and ventilation. There were also complaints when seatbelt laws were implemented, when traffic laws were created, when smoking was banned in public places. But public health choices are a matter of fact and science, not bending to public opinion. COVID-19, RSV, flu, and flu are danger to every single student and every family member of students. BPS has a legal and moral duty to reinstate a mask mandate and require PCR testing once school resumes next month. Every single infection and hospitalization due to SARS-CoV-2 and RSV is a policy failure. Rather than spending $30 million on surveilling children, that money could be better spent protecting children from a real threat to their safety and lives. Children deserve better. They deserve safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl Buckman.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a parent to a fourth-grade special needs student who attends the Dever. I'm a member of BPS Family for COVID Safety and a resident of South Boston. My son and myself both suffer from asthma and a rare genetic blood disorder that makes it hard for us to fight off an infection. I am currently home, recovering from emergency neck surgery, and my son is afraid of bringing COVID home and passing it on to myself or his ill grandmother. We're in the season that health providers are calling, calling this a tripe-demic. BPS has failed to listen to those communities that have been most impacted by COVID. They have failed to make significant mitigation efforts. We need a clear system and a transparent system to alert families when a positive case or outbreak is at their child's school. The winter and cold months are here, and so are the rise of rise in wastewater and COVID cases. Isn't the time now to act to protect our students, teachers, and staff from infection? COVID cases have nearly tripled since the Thanksgiving break. BPS can bring back universal masking and pooled PCR testing at, at, at least at a particular school, at the beginning of a community-wide surge, and after long weekends and vacations, such as, such as the upcoming December break. In Boston, many of the children are from Black and Brown communities, most impacted by COVID already. Many students live in multi-generational households. Exposure to this virus means they can easily spread it to those members at high risk. We want, we also know that BPS buildings are, on average, over eighty years old and do not have adequate ventilation. In fact, three-quarters of BPS schools do not have HVAC. Mayor Wu has promised to improve school buildings with the Green New Deal for BPS. But so far, the plan does not include any mention of ventilation. The city must reinvest in our schools and communities so that students and staff can have the ventilation needed to be protected from COVID, as well as being cool in the summer, warm in the winter, in ways that are energy-efficient. I will end with this quote from my son. Masks keep our friends, family, teachers, staff, and community safe and healthy. I love being in school, and I don't want to go back to a time where I only saw my friends and teachers through a computer. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Betsy Yoshimura.
Hello. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to all of us. My name is Betsy Yoshimura, and my daughter is a third grader at the Mario Umana Dual Language Academy in East Boston. I am commenting today to urge BPS to reintroduce masking and testing protocols following the winter break, and, you know, as long as seems necessary to keep us all healthy and safe during this holiday season, and especially as we enter into even colder days in February. I was very, very happy to hear that this is an ongoing topic of discussion with all of you already, and I, I am very, very hopeful that the masking requirements will come into play. Thank you very much. We'll talk to you guys later.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Suleika Soto.
Hi, good evening. My name is Suleika Soto. I have two daughters in the Boston Public Schools, and I am a South End resident. I'm also one of the co-founders of BPS Families for COVID Safety and a parent organizer with the Boston Education Justice Alliance. So today marks just one year since Fam Cosa had a rally at the State House called Shine a Light on COVID Safety, where we were asking for, you know, more protections for our children then. We did have some protections then, but now we don't have any. So, you know, since all this year and as a mayor talking point, BPS and the mayor's office continue to claim that they are committed to ensuring the health and safety of our students and keeping them in school. But by refusing to implement a mask requirement and testing after the Thanksgiving break, BPS, Mayor Wu, are leaving our students, families like mine, staff, and the overall community vulnerable to further sickness and death. If they were really committed to ensuring that our kids do not lose days of learning, they would listen to us, they would listen to the nurses and the medical professionals, professionals, and take the necessary steps to ensure that every student can access in-person learning in a safe way. We were at the bowling building today. Superintendent Skipper, I hope you received the copies of the emails that we sent to you with Mr. Sam DePina and Ms. Robinson. I was at, I also asked that you get a copy. We delivered today about 175 emails, I think. After we printed them yesterday, it's up to about 200 of folks that do support a mask and policy. And as you could see with the testimony of some of the folks earlier that came before me, there is support for mask and policies. There is a desperate need. Our hospitals are currently full. Like the young lady that spoke before me said, it is a tripe-demic. You know, we have COVID, we have flu, we have RSV, and the Boston Public Schools does have a responsibility to provide our students and our kids with a safe learning environment. And, you know, your own advisors, who was the BPHC, co-authored a wonderful study that actually proved that, one, BPS were, and the city of Boston were leaders. And, you know, so we really call for you all to stop neglecting and to really protect the health and safety of our students. And I just quickly just wanted to read a statement from one of the nurses. The BTU Nurse Faculty Senate did sign a resolution supporting Fam Cosa, and I'll just quickly read his statement. "As the Health Commission study shows, there is an immediate link between safety measures taken in schools and prevention of sickness and death in the communities where our students and staff live. That is why the Nurse Faculty Senate is calling on the district to take action now to implement a mask and mandate in school in January. School nurses are on the front lines. We see and feel what is being called the tripe-demic every day. That is why we are calling for an immediate plan to implement universal masking in schools in January. On December 7th, the Nurse Faculty Senate of the Boston Public Schools unanimously passed a resolution calling on the district to take immediate steps to implement a mask and mandate in January. The Health Commission studies makes it clear that masking and other similar strategies in schools can offset the effects of structural racism in our healthcare system. As school nurses, we are committed to the fight against racism, and that is one of the main reasons we passed this resolution." Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Robinson. That concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first action item this evening is a group of school and space renaming proposals composed of Boston Arts Academy, Madison Park Technical Vocational High School, Matter Hunt Community Center/Matter Hunt Elementary School, and McKinley Programs. You'll recall that Deputy Superintendent of Operations Sam DePina joined school leaders in presenting these proposals to the committee at our December meeting. I will now turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Just wanted to say thank you. It was really impressive, the number of community members that came to speak on the behalf of all of the work that the school communities did. As you know, it was quite a process to go through for the change of names of rooms and areas of the school and/or schools. And, you know, the, the school communities really dug in. They followed the process school committee had laid out. And then they really showed up in force, last committee and a few this committee as well, to, to just be able to speak on the positiveness, on the positivity of the process, and how much they respect the people for whom all of these rooms and areas of the schools will be named. So I just want to thank, you know, everybody's hard work, Deputy DePina and the Facilities Department for helping to facilitate it, community engagement, and, and most importantly, our school communities.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to the committee for final questions and comments. Any comments before we move forward? Mr. O'Neill and then Ms. LaPera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said last week, I just want to thank the four schools for all their work and how they carried through in the process on this, particularly having the school site councils, schools that did surveys of students in particular. And deeply honored to be voting for this tonight, in particular for Ms. Alma Lewis. I'm forgetting she may be doctor, and I apologize if, am I correct? Yes, it is. Dr. Alma Lewis, of course, yes. A former principal, long-term principal, Mr. McAfee, and of course Reverend King, and all his support for the schools overall and in particularly for the students, the McKinley and the, and the South End Building, many times talking to us as the school committee about his support for those students. So delighted this process has resulted in tonight's vote.
Thank you. Ms. LaPera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to echo the words of Member O'Neill as well as Superintendent Skipper. I think the part that I have found most, perhaps impressive is not the right word, but in that realm, is that this has really been driven by the school communities themselves with the support of the district to go through that process. And so I think for me, it just solidifies the value and the voice of the community. This is their desire, and so very much appreciative of their engagement and their leadership.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just want to also go my support for all that's been said. And one hope that I have that these, these rooms and buildings are being named about some incredible Boston contributors to our history. And I hope that there will be biographies written so that they can be shared with all of our students from kindergarten on up so that they will know who these amazing people are. So I hope we will see this also come to fruition as part of our curriculum. That being said, I just want to thank you all, and we will take four separate votes, one vote for each school. So I will now entertain a motion to name twenty-seven spaces at Boston Arts Academy in honor of individuals who have made a significant contribution to BAA as presented. And the complete list of names can be found in your meeting documents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to name two rooms at Madison Park Technical Vocational High School in honor of former staff members Charles McAfee and Jose Solis, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to name a room at the Matter Hunt Community Center/Matter Hunt Elementary School in honor of community activist Annie Kincaid, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I will now like, I will now entertain a motion to rename the McKinley Programs to Melvin H. King Health and Academy in honor of the former state representative for the Ninth Suffolk District, BPS alumnus and educator and youth advocate as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Yes. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, with enthusiasm.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. And congratulations to all the school communities for their hard work, this endeavor. Our next action items are two memorandum of agreements between the Boston School Committee and the Administrative Guild SEIU Local Eight Eighty-Eight. You will recall that Labor Relations Director Jeremiah Hassan presented these tentative agreements to the committee earlier this evening along with three supplemental appropriation requests, which the committee will take action on in January. I will now invite the superintendent to offer any final comments.
We'd just like to really thank both our unions as well as OLR for all of the work that they've done to get us to this point. I think, you know, as I indicated at last school committee meeting, we are working very hard to get all of our labor contracts current out of respect for our labor. You know, we rely, you know, on all of our labor units to make our school system work for our students. So it's, it's imperative for us that we try to get our contracts current, that those contracts are filled with proposals that are going to help those that are working in that unit as well as the school district. And I think what you have before you tonight is, we've discussed, help us a great deal to be able to move that forward and to be able to show the level of respect that we hope to, to those that work for us. So I want to thank Jeremiah and his team for all the incredible work that goes into working to get a contract to the point of approval, to the point of ratification with a unit. And I, I think this will be, these will be two of several that will be forthcoming as we continue to work across our labor units to bring them current.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. Thank you. We will take two votes, one on each agreement. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Administrative Guild SEIU Local Eight Eighty-Eight and the Boston School Committee effective September first, twenty twenty, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Administrative Guild SEIU Local Eight Eighty-Eight and the Boston School Committee effective September one, twenty twenty-two through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our final action item this evening is an amendment to the school committee bylaws. Article two, section one of the Boston School Committee bylaws requires the committee to quote convene its annual meeting on the first Monday in January of each year end quote. As the first Monday of January twenty twenty-three falls on January second, which is the public holiday, New Year's Day observed, we propose that the school committee vote to suspend Article two, section one for this year only and instead convene our twenty twenty-three organizational meeting on Wednesday, January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Article seven, section two of the bylaw states that, quote, "These bylaws may be amended by a vote of five members of the committee." I will now open it up to the committee for discussion. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none, I would like to entertain a motion to suspend Article two, section one of the school committee bylaws for this school year only and schedule our twenty twenty-three organizational meeting for January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Fran, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our, our main report this evening is financial update for fiscal year twenty-two through fiscal year twenty-four. I will now turn it over to Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter and his team. And again, I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairperson Robinson and members of the school committee. Thank you for the opportunity to present this financial update on behalf of the superintendent and the Boston Public Schools. I'm joined this evening by David Bloom, our Deputy Chief Financial Officer, and Serena LaRocque, the Director of ESSER School Accountability. I'm proud to present this report and update you that BPS continues to be in excellent financial health with resources we need to support our students. We're hoping that you walk away from tonight's presentation knowing that we are focused on three things. Sustainability, strategy, and most importantly, student outcomes. For our focus on sustainability, our team is balancing the speed with which we were required to spend ESSER funding with the need to manage the fiscal cliff. Our strategic approach to planning is that we're thinking about the mix of federal dollars and local revenue and shifting how we fund different initiatives in a way that supports our long-term goals. And finally, the superintendent has asked us to put all our students at the center of our planning. We are here for our students, and they, they need to be at the center of every decision we make. Of course, I would be remiss if I did not note that while ESSER is an incredible opportunity and source of funding, we are truly able to think and plan for a sustainable, strategic, and student-centered district because of the support of Mayor Wu and the city of Boston. The city of Boston continues to invest in and value public education. Our budget is a statement of our values. We must build a sustainable budget beyond the end of ESSER funding that meets the needs of our students at this moment and lays a foundation for us to build on our priority areas. As we take on long-needed and critical changes in literacy, inclusion, bilingual, and secondary education, we are determined to deliver on our promise of educational equity and excellence. Tonight, the team will be presenting on three fiscal years and provide an update on where we stand as a district. We'll first discuss fiscal year twenty-two, which ended on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Then we'll transition to fiscal year twenty-three, which is our current fiscal year. And finally, we'll preview the FY twenty-four budget, which we will present in full on February first, twenty twenty-three, and will begin operating in July of twenty twenty-three. We, as a district, have been consistent in our high-quality management and our fiscal, of our fiscal resources. And despite the challenges we face at this point, we have the financial resources to make important progress for all of our students. With that, I'll turn it over to David Bloom, our Deputy Chief Financial Officer, to discuss FY twenty-two.
Good evening, School Committee. Let me start my, my introduction again. Thank you so much for having me tonight. For the school year FY twenty-two, which ended in June, on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, BPS ended the year on budget for the thirty-second consecutive year. We spent about thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars under our appropriation from the city, which was well within our target of less than a paraprofessional salary difference between our appropriation and our actual spending. This ensures we are utilizing every dollar we receive from the city to best meet the needs of kids. As we finish the year on budget, we did not fully expand in each area of our appropriation. We had higher-than-expected costs in areas such as temporary employees, utilities, and transportation. And we identified operational savings and re-prioritized funds in employee salaries, health insurance, and contracted services. As we move from fiscal year twenty-two into the current fiscal year running, starting Jul- July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, we are confident that we will close this year on budget. This is reflected in the materials you received along with the presentation tonight showing our projected spending alongside our budget in several key categories. We are seeing higher-than-expected costs in transportation primarily due to higher-than-expected inflationary pressures, increased wages and training as we bring in more drivers. We also saw slightly higher costs from our new meals contract than we had originally projected as well as continued high commodity prices, leaving, leading to higher-than-normal utility costs. We are also continuing to see hotter, lower-than-expected costs in salaries due to a higher-than-usual vacancy rate. And related to that, a slightly lower-than-typical health insurance cost as well. As we moved into fiscal year twenty-three, there were several key investments on the general fund that we would like to highlight. First was our investment in Mass Core. This was aligned with the class of twenty twenty-six being our first class where we are ensuring Mass Core requirements. This slide gives you a little bit of information on the implementation of that program. And the team would be happy to follow up in the new year with more information on Mass Core in general. Specifically, our Mass Core investment focused on expanded access to PE, arts, and world language by adding more than fifty full-time equivalent teachers across our high schools. Related to our expansion in Mass Core, we added a team of ninth-grade counselors across every secondary school with ninth grade in the system to ensure that there was at least one guides counselor for every hundred and fifty ninth-grade students. This helps ensure that as students are entering high school, they are receiving the counseling support they need to ensure that they are on track to meet Mass Core with their individualized schedule. Finally, as part of our investment in equitable literacy, we had the first year of a four-year investment in libraries adding thirty-three point five FTE for certified librarians across thirty-eight schools. You will see some information here about our progress in hiring those positions and some work they're doing, including our priority of focusing on transformation schools, hub schools, and dual-language schools as well as the work to ensure we have high-quality collections across our schools. And with that, I'll turn it over to Serena LaRocque to talk about our investments in ESSER.
Hi there. It's great to be in this space, and good evening, School Committee. So, we're going to talk about how the funds were divided. And so this table illustrates the plan for spending among different types of investments that serve the purposes in our effort of to return, recover, and reimagine in the wake of the pandemic. For school plan investments, an average of fifty million per year for each year of ESSER is going directly to schools, has gone and, and is continuing to go directly to schools. With the guidance of the ESSER Commission in spring of twenty twenty-one, we were, we are using a per-pupil formula to concentrate funds on schools serving high-need students. So students with disabilities, multilingual students, multilingual students with disabilities, and low-income students. We heard from the community that it was critically important that schools receive the funds directly as soon as possible that school leaders engage their communities to inform how they spend their funds. And that the use of funds demonstrate impact on student outcomes. There is an additional eleven point five million that will go directly to schools, but there will be some parameters from the district to support our inclusion and multilingual efforts. Next, we have the district-wide investments. And so these are funding programs, services, materials, and in some cases, staff that benefit schools and their students directly, but are planned, purchased, and supported through the district. We use this approach particularly where there are supports that are needed across many or all schools or where specific equity and access gaps needed to be addressed between schools. Then we have the cross-school innovation investments and community investments. We currently have plans to use these funds to support our major district priorities. So at present, community partners are also funded as part of our district and school plans. And so we are going to look through all of the different investments and see how we can pull and allocate the funds to those existing efforts that we have. Then you'll see COVID mitigation, so additional COVID mitigation. And this covers the cost of additional items such as school cleaning and PPE. It's important to note that under the district-wide investments bucket, there are other COVID mitigations such as stipends for nurses and air filtration. These are combined of ESSER two and ESSER three. So let's jump into the spending. So each year, we have divided the total ESSER funds to how much we budgeted, budgeted spending each year. We have combined the breakdown of ESSER two, which expires September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and ESSER three, which expires September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. It's important to note there are a few strategies we're implementing as we monitor spending. One of our spending strategies is to spend down ESSER two first and then spend down ESSER three since we have an additional year to spend ESSER three. Secondly, each year, we have divided the total ESSER funds to how much we have budgeted to spend each year. Thirdly, we are reallocating funds that are underspent. So we've, if we see that we've budgeted a certain amount and we're underspending, we are starting to reallocate those funds to other major districts. we are starting to reallocate those funds to other major district priorities, such as equitable literacy, inclusion, multilingual learning. On this graph, we show a little, we show more detail on the FY twenty-two spending. So, in FY twenty-two, we did not plan for or anticipate spending in the cross-school innovation or community investments bucket as it was defined. In FY twenty-two, schools spent twenty-four million out of their total allocation. Unspent funds from FY twenty-two were carried over directly onto school budgets for FY twenty-three, so they still have access to it. For district investments, we have spent about forty-seven million in FY twenty-two. And in FY twenty-three, we have roughly reallocated the six million of ten million to support priority district and, um, invest initiatives. For example, partnering with City Year to complement our equitable literacy efforts. A number of school leaders across the district requested to work with City Year through ESSER, and so that's how we determined that there was a need across the district. Therefore, those unspent funds were reallocated. We know that it's incredibly important to monitor ESSER frequently and share it with the committee. We are releasing our major ESSER spending report in January twenty twenty-three. And then, once we release the report, we will ensure that ESSER is integrated into the monthly budget updates to promote complete transparency. So, let's transition a little bit to spending, to outcomes, and progress monitoring. We are balancing the need to spend quickly while also having an impact on, on students. According to national experts, the gold standard of traditional return on investments approaches, so looking at the long-term outcomes in education, um, doesn't necessarily match well with the ESSER's shorter timeline. Therefore, because it's incredibly important to see the impact of these funding, our approach to spending versus outcome is to focus on the continuous improvement on the return of investment as a way to assess and improve the use of ESSER. This was especially true in FY twenty-two when implementation was in its first year. Then, what's also been important, because we are monitoring continuous improvement, is to ensure that we have a strong sustainability plan, which we will touch on in the next slides and again later in this presentation under FY twenty-four planning. So, on this slide, let's look at one highlight or example. We have invested forty-two-point-six million across the three years to accelerate academic performance. This is aligned to School Committee goals, one through four. One large investment currently on ESSER is our equitable literacy. And as part of that, uh, we are providing every school with library staffing, refurbished library collections, and information technology. In addition, to shifting BPS early literacy policy and materials to align with the site, um, science of reading, in which all students actively engage in culturally and linguistically responsive, standard-aligned grade-level tasks and tests, tests, every day in every classroom. In addition, we are going to provide sixty new outdoor teaching and learning spaces in science and provide field trips, offer ethnic studies to all secondary high schools, provide interventions in individualized learning, such as remote tutoring. So, if you look at this here, the way that we're progress monitoring, we see that forty percent last year, there was an increase of forty percent in students' library access compared to FY twenty-one. Over four hundred teachers received professional development on equitable literacy. Seventy-six elementary schools received the curriculum materials. And then thirty-five telescope teacher leadership fund grants were awarded and are currently in progress. We also wanna highlight that ESSER is just kind of zoning into, um, learning loss and interventions. ESSER funds are supporting a significant expansion of February and April acceleration academies, providing four times the level of funding for academies that have been available in previous years. Accelerated academic recovery with an emphasis on meeting the needs of English learners at high schools through February and April vacation academies. There is also our expanded access, um, expanded summer access district investment. So, basically, that is expanding access to high-quality summer learning and enrichment programs by purchasing additional seats and capacity. Then, that's just the district highlight. There is also on the front of school ESSER investments, where we have, um, schools have used stipends to help support instructional leadership team efforts to use MAP growth assessments data and reading and writing in additional, in addition to other information to closely monitor student progress and adjust instruction. There are also schools who are stipending their teachers to provide tutoring to students. So, these are just some highlights and some examples. If you would like to read more in detail, because we only highlighted a section um, about each district investment and school plan, we've released a report in June on our public website that shares the details of each investment bucket, each district plan, and each school plan. In addition, by January twenty twenty-three, we will release an updated plan, which will include the spending, the progress monitoring in a similar way that's presented in this slide, and also you will learn more about which school received which, um, district investment. So, let's talk about briefly, and again, we'll talk about a little bit later, on ESSER sustainability. ESSER is laying the structure of the inclusion policy as negotiated in our agreement with the BTU with a five-point-four million to expand the implementation of inclusion and inclusive practices across the district, ensuring that more students will be able to learn in the least restrictive environment. This is an interplay in addition to school ESSER in that school investments, where they are, um, funding various inclusion models, as well as the superintendent mentioned earlier. ESSER is also funding equitable literacy to increase student mastery of literacy across all grades. And so these are core to our district. And so therefore, while ESSER is kickstarting the, an, um, initial investments for these priorities, we are planning to move them on to more sustainable funds. And so since the beginning of ESSER, we had the following sustainability plans. Identify one-time costs that can make an impact on students' experience far beyond the life of ESSER. Prioritize district investments that can make an impact with temporary programming. Ensure that approved positions are posted as temporary grant-funded. Place immediate costs on ESSER with a plan to transition those costs onto the annual BPS operational budget. Create a progress monitoring strategy to help us understand which district initiatives have been implemented most successfully. We have already started implementing some of those strategies to prepare for sustainability. Nate will share additional detail in the FY twenty-four planning section of this presentation, and now I will pass it off to Nate.
This week, we began the process of working with school leaders on their individual school budgets. And, but we're still very early in the planning process, and I wanna take this opportunity to provide some additional context heading into fiscal year twenty-four planning and to give you a pre- uh, preview of the superintendent's budget priorities. This, of course, is gonna, this is not gonna be your only opportunity to provide feedback on these pri- uh, priorities. We plan to present our initial budget proposal to this body again on February first, following nearly two months of budget discussions, um, with you. Cause we start the planning process both practically and symbolically with our students, I wanna start the discussion of FY twenty-four planning with an update on our enrollment. Enrollment continued to decline for the sixth consecutive year this year. Total BPS enrollment has now dropped by seven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven students, or fourteen percent over the last six years. The largest single-year declines occurred during the pandemic, school years twenty twenty-one and school year twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. But this is no, this is a longer-term trend that predates the pandemic and will continue beyond it. This year, enrollment fell by five hundred and forty-five students, or one percent, which is the smallest single-year decline since six, since school year sixteen, seventeen, and was a smaller change than we had projected last fall. The smaller drop in total enrollment was driven by an influx of new students, almost exclusively among English learners. This growth occurred over the course of last school year. This chart shows the change in enrollment between October and June in a given school year. Last year, enrollment grew by six hundred and ninety students, whereas growth during each of the prior five school years was less than two hundred and fifty students, and in fact, was negative in two of those years. While the growth last year was smaller overall, um, and the smaller overall decline was welcome news, we do expect enrollment to continue to decline moving forward. This is primarily due to the size of the cohorts in elementary grades. And when I refer to a size of a cohort, you can think of that as a graduating class. So, all of the students who are in the current K-two classroom, our current kindergarteners, are a single cohort who we will watch move through the system from kindergarten to first grade, from first grade to second grade. When we look at changes in enrollment by grade band, we see that recent declines are concentrated in elementary grades. The top blue line in this chart shows total enrollment in grades K-two to five. And it shows that that enrollment in K-two to five has declined by nearly five thousand students, or nineteen percent over the last six years. Enrollment in grades six to eight, the orange line, the bottom line, which includes students enrolled in both K-to-eights standalone middle schools and six and seven through twelve high schools. Um, and those students in grades nine through twelve, the gray line, have declined as well, but to a much lesser extent. This is important because once a K-two cohort enters the system, that cohort tends to get smaller each year as it ages through the system. For that reason, the best indicator of our future enrollment is the number of students we currently serve. As such, the decline in elementary enrollment predicts fewer, further decline in the future year as smaller elementary cohorts continue to age up through the system. The overall enl- enrollment trends are largely the result of broader demographic trends. The top line in this chart shows the number of births to Boston residents. The blue bars underneath represent the number of students who enroll in BPS five years later. What we wanna show is the relationship between the number of children who are born in Boston and our enrollment when they, uh, become school-aged five years later. What we see is that elementary enrollment declines are driven by fewer births and, to a lesser extent, a smaller percentage of those births resulting in BPS enrollment, what we sometimes call our capture rate, or the ratio of K-two students to the number of births five years prior. This has declined to an extent, especially during the first year of the pandemic. We also see that the number of births overall has declined consistently over the last seven, several years, dropping ten percent between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and nineteen. The number of births on the right, associate, which are associated with the next school years, show a larger drop, so we can expect a similar trend of smaller K-two cohorts to continue. We mentioned this and try and put this in context, because we hear a lot about students leaving BPS. But this slide underscores the broader trends are in play, and that it's less about students leaving BPS than it is about fewer students in the city overall. In this chart, the top dark blue line shows total K-two enrollment for all Boston residents across all school types, including private, parochial, and charter schools. The middle, blue, light blue line shows BPS's K-two enrollment, so you can see that the percentage of the overall population that we serve. The lower gray line shows K-two enrollment to Boston residents in non-BPS schools. This shows that K-two enrollment among all residents declined by twelve hundred students, or twenty-two percent in the last eight years between school year thirteen, fourteen, and school year twenty-one, twenty-two. While the majority of that decline was in BPS schools prior to the pandemic, enrollment in non-BPS schools in school year twenty-one, twenty-two was down twenty-three percent compared to its peak in school year eighteen, nineteen. We don't have data on Boston resident enrollment in non-BPS schools until the spring, but it does appear that this year's K-two enrollment in Boston charter schools, which includes non-Boston residents, is in line with last year's. So, we can expect the numbers for school year twenty-two, twenty-three to look somewhat similar. The decline in Boston-wide enrollment is occurring across all grades. And citywide enrollment is down ten percent in school year twenty-one, twenty-two this current school year compared to the five years prior. Included this last slide to highlight one of the other dynamics that we are contending with as a system, given recent enrollment declines. The, well, the recent enrollment declines are concentrated among general education students, which is leading to a higher concentration of need in the district. In this chart, the orange line shows the total enrollment in specialized programs for students with disabilities, what we typically refer to as our students in inclusion or substantially separate programs. The blue line shows total enrollment in all other programs. Over the last eight years, enrollment in specialized programs for students with disabilities is up ten percent, while enrollment in all other programs is down seventeen percent. This has many consequences, among them being higher cost per pupil and less unused physical space than the scale of enrollment decline would suggest, as specialized programs have smaller class-size limits and are using more space in, um, throughout the building. As we transitioned into FY twenty-four planning, I wanted to talk a little bit and highlight a project that I, you're probably gonna hear me talk about every single time I come back to School Committee, cause we're excited about the opportunity. And it's our reimagine school funding policy. The goal of this project is to, to equity, equitably reimagine our school funding model. We've been using weighted student funding for over twelve years, and some of the assumptions on which the model was built are no longer holding true. And certainly, the high, uh, rates of enrollment decline has, um, has caused us to rethink both our footprint, some of the conversations with the Green New Deal, and now to think about the school funding. This is gonna be an eighteen-month process designed to bring student, family, community, and school leader voice to the center of the funding redesign process, so we can rethink together how our funding policy can better serve BPS students and support BPS schools. With that, I'll transition into FY twenty-four budget planning. And it might surprise most people to find out how early in the year we, as a district, begin our budget process. As I mentioned earlier, we launched the bo- we launched the budget process with our schools this week. And, uh, the reason that we started this early is because our process is built around two key deadlines. First, we have a legal obligation to present a budget to this, to this school committee the first Wednesday of February. The second reason is that in order to ensure that we have the best opportunity to hire high-quality teachers, we wanna have our teaching positions finalized and posted in March. On this slide, you'll see key dates and activities throughout the process. Items in green are opportunities for the community to engage in, in the budget. This includes engagement opportunities at each school site, with the school committee, and with the city council. In all, this is a six-month, um, pro- public engagement process for our budget. We find ourselves trying to balance four things in our budget planning. The first is that we need to spend down ESSER, but we also need to begin to move strategic investments off of ESSER to ensure that they're sustainable beyond the grant. We also need to move away from a hold-harmless strategy that we've had for the last few years and focus on strategic investments that improves- and focus on strategic investments that improves student outcomes. But at the same time, we can't do that at the expense of critical services. It's in that tension that we start to lay out our plan going into this budget process. Superintendent Skipper has asked the schools and the district office teams to align their budgets to this emerging framework for the FY twenty four budget, to meet the needs of our students and to create a fully inclusive, high performing, performing district for all students. The superintendent is asking everyone to focus on six areas. The first is the inclusion strategy. Through the new BTU contract, BPS is committed to increasing inclusive practices and opportunities that fully leverage the assets of all our students. The work requires us to rethink, retrain, and reconsider how we work as a district. It will require multiple years of investment to expand student supports and change our practices. This year, we'll begin to invest in a subset of schools to pilot new ways to engage students in accessing core instruction. We will also construct district wide expansion plan and will lay the foundation for all schools with new, new positions focused on multi-tiered systems of support, infrastructure building, and diverse learning experiences. Second priority is multilingual, multicultural education. Following efforts to expand multilingual education throughout the OM strategic plan and after a period of declining enrollment during the pandemic, we are now seeing our multilingual learner enrollment grow. And this is good news for our district. We must continue to provide better services to fulfill our commitment to expand native language access, bilingual education, and meet students' needs by leveraging home language and reshaping education in our city. The third priority is equitable literacy. One thing that pandemic revealed in particular is that the further disparities in literacy achievement, which requires that we double down on our efforts to implement explicit, evidence-based reading and writing support for all students in every school. Through our equitable literacy strategy, all students actively engage in culturally and linguistically responsive, standards-aligned grade-level tasks and texts in every class.
Nate, please slow down a bit.
Yes. Uh, the fourth priority area is restorative justice, social work, and student safety. Strengthening access to social emotional supports and ensuring student safety helps us provide our students and staff with physically and emotionally safe learning and teaching environments. This isn't a challenge we can solve ourselves. What happens in our neighborhoods triple, trickles into our schools. We need the whole city to support our students. The fifth priority is high schools and alternative education. Last year, enrollment declined by approximately six hundred students. The same year, we had six hundred students drop out or timeout of our district. As adults, we need to do our part to focus on developing our skills in trauma-sensitive practices and restorative practices, build authentic adult student relationships to help our students become stronger learners. And the final category is family and community engagement. We are committed to executing several district-wide programs and projects, including the Green New Deal for BPS, to help improve student learning experiences and access to resources. To ensure that these projects are carried out with genuine family and community engagement practices, we need to increase trust within our community and receive helpful feedback. These efforts can help shape the direction of these projects, hold BPS accountable, and ensure the district is fully meeting the needs of our students. BPS has two challenges, two sustainability challenges facing our schools. ESER funding and the general funds allocated to schools to hold them harmless from enrollment declines. In fiscal year twenty three, schools received fifty million dollars in supplemental funding from ESER, an additional forty nine million in hold harmless funding. That was on general fund. While we have launched two system-changing initiatives, the Green New Deal and the reimagine school funding project, neither will have the fiscal impact until FY twenty five. Meantime, we need to begin to transition critical school-based investments from ESER onto the general fund while balancing the need to fully spend down ESER. So our approach includes the following. The first, we're going to identify current school-based ESER investments aligned to our strategy for inclusion, multilingual learner program expansion and/or equitable literacy, and move these positions onto the general fund. This is critical to secure these positions beyond ESER. We're working with our schools in December and January to identify the specific positions and associated costs. But what we're going to see is parts of their ESER planning that is the current spending that is part of their plan. And we're going to move that onto the general fund and it will be part of our FY twenty four proposal to you in February. At the same time, we're going to shift a portion of the hold harmless support from the general fund and onto ESER. This approach means that schools will not be required to make cuts to support their students, but we will change the funding source that's paying for it. And it's important to emphasize again, we're not proposing a reduction in hold harmless funding. Instead, we're proposing a change to how the funding or how that hold harmless support is funded. And so you're going to see a different shift in strategy that ensures that we spend down ESER fully, but that the general fund proposal that we bring back to you in February prioritizes our ongoing strategic investments on general funds. Finally, over the next two months of planning, we need to come together to think about every big and small decision from the student's perspective. We're here for our students. They need to be at the center of every decision we make. As we develop this budget, look through the eyes of students and teachers. We're going to be asking ourselves the question, what does support look like to them? What does the system mean? And of course, one of our goals in the process and my personal goal is to make sure people know how and when in the budget process, they can become involved and advocate. The goal is to make sure they know when it's most likely to influence how we develop the budget. So in addition to the process slide I showed earlier, I wanted to reiterate the key dates so that families and students can participate in this year's budget process fully. Most notably, schools will be meeting with their school site councils between January thirteenth and January ninth to discuss individual school budgets. And then we will come back to this committee on February first, the first Wednesday in February, to present the, our proposal for the fiscal year twenty four budget. With that, I will turn it back over to Chairperson Robinson, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cooter, and thank you to your team for their critical work. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Dr. Alkins?
Uh, again, I concede to Mr. Cardad Hernandez, who had a hand up first.
Okay, go for it.
Thank you so much, and thanks for the presentation. Um, I have a lot of questions, so I'm going to try to go fast, and I guess I'll go fast and maybe our answers can be fast too, so we can get a lot in. Um, I think the sort of first flag for me is that just like fiscal year twenty five sounds pretty scary. Um, and I fear uh sort of using ESER for soft landings doesn't address the strategic priority of sustainability. Um, and you know, I'll go sort of backwards. I'm curious, let me, if I'm understanding this right, I want to give an example just to see if it's, it's correct. Like in a school that is currently receiving soft landings for under enrollment, we would move, uh, so I'm just sort of moving my notes around, sorry. We would move um a currently ESER-funded equitable literacy coach at that school to the general fund. But a third grade classroom teacher whose position is currently funded with soft landings would have their position funded by ESER, which ends in twenty twenty five. Um, help me like, help me understand that part.
Um, yeah, no, I appreciate uh trying to get specific because I think that, that absolutely helps. Um, the hold harmless funding, so when we think about categories of, of supplemental funding to schools, um, we have in the past emphasized the discussion about our foundation for quality. And the foundation for quality was the core compliance positions, which are classroom teachers, paraprofessionals, those that are required to operate a program. And um, what we, what we did was expand upon that to identify new positions and guarantee every school has a certain percentage of discretionary funds, so they can fund partners or other things that are not necessarily compliance-related, but still gives even the most under-enrolled schools some flexibility in their budget. That's what we call the foundation for quality. It used to be called sustainability schools. Hold harmless was funding over and above that basic level. And so some of the schools that we held harmless had uh, resources that we wouldn't consider necessarily for compliance. Um, and not necessarily aligned closely to the strategic uh, vision that we have for inclusion, equitable literacy, or um, or the OM strategic plan. So we're going to be working to identify the difference between these are core classrooms that need to stay on the general fund. And these are the others hold harmless that in other budget years when we had difficult years, we would have had schools cut those two years ago, we'd have had schools cut them. But we're not asking them to cut them now. We want to say is, now what we want you to do is identify ways to rethink how you're using those supports, align them more strategically to what we're trying to do. And identify places where capacity could come offline, because that's another area that we have not looked to, to sort of close individual classrooms um, over the last few years because we were waiting to see how enrollment rebounded. Now we feel more confidently that we need to close classroom capacity. And again, schools are not going to ask to reduce their budget. They're going to ask to take that extra funding and now align it to the things we know we want to invest in over the future years. Um, and I see the superintendent has her hand raised, which means I should hand the mic off.
No, so I, I think just to, just to go one step further. So the example there would be, say that that third grade classroom had two students in it. That would be one that we would flag, eh, you know, to the principal because of the severe under enrollment and work with that principal to see how closing that classroom would enable them to be able to take those resources, reinvest them in, say, a reading specialist for inclusion, or say, an ESL teacher for bilingual education. And so by doing that, they're sort of making more efficient their dollars in line with the priority areas. But for like a, a general third grade that's, you know, got a healthy enrollment that, you know, that is fine, that would be part of just the original core budget. So there would be no touching of that.
But it is safe to say there is a school who would be making that sort of transactional move, given this strategy, that exists in our system, who's you currently using soft landing to fund maybe a classroom with two or five.
I would say, I would say it, it's going to more likely be innate, I'm in on this, but it's more likely what we're seeing that those dollars would be used for would be like, some people have extra operational people that they might be using, you know, as we all do, just to make things run a little bit more seamless. Uh, they might be funding, you know, um, a tutoring position, or they might be funding, um, you know, uh, I, like a, like a fourth social worker, like there could be those kinds of things where, you know, they'll be able to fund it for this next year, and then they will in next year's budget have to make that decision as we go through this one more round.
Yeah.
Whether that comes over onto their, to their hard budget or not. So there's kind of two years of decision-making that have to happen.
But, but by making sort of these positions covered by the general fund, it means on some level that when ESER dollars go away, the city will have in twenty twenty five, the city then has no choice but to either increase the general fund to keep those positions or make, particularly if you're talking about like, because I totally hear you, it's like it could be administrative roles or, you know, forget the sort of like they're funding external partners, right, which may be some of it, but like, at the end of the day, there's like labor also implication. So like, if you move it to the general fund to cover those positions in schools who are using soft landing to cover personnel, what's the sort of twenty twenty five decision? It either means like increase the general fund, we're coming back to the city for more money, or it's letting folks go, it's, you know, there's an element of like right sizing the system and it's like, when does it happen?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's an element of right side in the system uh for a lot of reasons, right? It's for enrollment reasons, it's because ESER was an artificial inflation of the system, right? So whatever positions got inflated due to ESER, they were never intended to be long-termly, long-term funded. So what we're, what we're sort of trying to do here is in a, in a very strategic way, say, here's kind of the academic and um other priorities that we're galvanizing around that we believe are going to move the needle on student outcome. Let's make sure at minimum that we're taking care of these by strategically moving funding to the hard budget, so that the stuff that would be cut wouldn't be the things that we believe as a district we need to do to be able to make the difference to student outcome, like our inclusion, like our bilingual, right? So, um, so I would also say that we are still going through the pandemic.
I can't.
We are still going through the pandemic. I think one of the interpreters is um off channel.
There's an, yeah, there's an interpreter on our channel, just
Yeah.
For a second.
Yeah.
Um, so I, you know, I think that um because we are still going through the pandemic, allowing, um, we were sort of charging to the Esser Cliff sixty miles an hour. So this is trying to pump the brakes a bit. And we've communicated to leaders, we are going to be able to allow you to do the service you've done this past year, this year. But the, but knowing that they're going to have to make some strategic decisions in that process because in FY twenty five, some things are going to be coming to an end.
Yeah.
Right? So it's, you know, if we were to say all that needs to terminate next year, it would be very difficult for schools, given where they are right now and what folks are struggling with. And the fact we haven't done this pre-work in the previous years to be able to do that.
Yeah, Superintendent, I think, listen, uh, you know, I said this to you when we first met, like, I think you inherited a really uh problem with this. I think some of it is tied to like other enrollment implications, like that there is a classroom with three or five students in here is like, eh, one is like a, a major sort of strategic problem in our broader system that like that could ever exist is, you know, it's like a taxpayer is like, how are we here? How is that like a good use of our resources, particularly given the concentration of vulnerability in the system? But I still am struggling to fully understand like making uh sort of the sort of long-term implication of moving ESER spending into that general fund and what it means, what it means for the fund, but I guess some of that is like what has to play out in the planning process.
Yeah, just, I would just add, I mean, I think just a, a couple of key points. One, core compliance positions are not going to be moving on to ESER. So we won't have a challenge with how do we fund that third grade classroom? That's not a sustainability problem we're going to create for ourselves. Um, but the funding that will, individual school funding that moves from the general fund to ESER will be funds that, that are within our discretion to cut in future years if we had to right-size the budget. So it is showing people the sort of sustainability challenge we have for, and the difference at individual schools between what is sustainable, sort of hard dollars as the superintendent has used, and what are unsustainable funding sources, because we have for multiple years sort of said, let's hold everyone harmless, and then we'll sort of take on the challenge. The other thing I'll just say, and, and you wanted my answers to be short, and I promise I'll tighten up. We have a couple major like projects going on that are going to shift the way we serve our students. The first is in, our inclusion strategy. And so we need to fundamentally rebuild how we do services for special education students. That is going to require us to build, in some ways, parallel paths, creating the new environments and fund new ways to support our students. While we show people that it works, and then we remove the old way of doing business and are able to sort of right-size that. Some of that's paid for in ESER, some of it's going to be paid for with, you know, a general fund investment this year. But it is sort of an expensive ch, transition. The second is we we need to make progress on the Green New Deal. That's part of the family engagement we need to do. We really do need to think about, to your point, how many of these schools? And we need to make an affirmative statement around, this is what we want our school buildings to look like. This is what resources we want them to have. This is what size they're going to be. We need to get building. At the same time, reimagine school funding is our opportunity to also redefine what we think every school needs to have from a funding perspective.
Yeah.
So we need every school to have a principal, an assistant principal, social workers, define that model. And then figure out the best way to fund it. What we know is that there are multiple ways in which weighted student funding are antiquated in terms of how we need to serve our students, particularly English learners. And it's causing sustainability funding, or it's causing funding to be labeled as hold harmless, when it really could be um actually funding new and innovative mo- models to serve our students better. And so that's the hard work that we're launching, and we're asking the community to participate with us and and give a lot of critical feedback, because I hope it shapes the way the district operates for the next ten years.
Last question here, just for like one more point of clarity. So how much is the soft landing for fiscal year twenty four that you're funding through S R? Like, how much is it expected to increase?
Uh, we don't have an estimate at this point. Um, we're beginning the process. Um, the first thing is to do a lot of work with these schools, and so that'll be part of our proposal that we bring to you on February first to say this is our proposed amount of soft landings. I will also just say, our soft landing, our hold harmless number is going down this year because we have seen enrollment increases at some of our schools. So some of the, some of the, it it on a, on a partial level, hold harmless was a smart strategy to maintain capacity, particularly for English learners, because they're now back in our system. So some of the hold harmless will actually be just um replaced by weighted student funding dollars.
I'm out of time, but I will go for another round and when everyone else goes. Thank you.
Dr. Hawkins.
Um, yes, thank you for that clarification. I think probably the example for me, if I'm understanding correctly, that would that sort of al- alarms me is thinking about, you know, for example, what happens to the funding that is covered by S R that has funded so much so many of the social emotional support staff for our students and thinking about how really like how that's going to be transitioned into the general budget for for many schools. So just thinking out loud about how that um is going to happen. I'd I'd love some insight there. Um, also at this stage, um, can you give a sense of how successful the racial equity planning tool was in developing um or in garnering community stakeholder input um to the table for for all, for many of the schools and in developing their their strategies? Um, also, I heard terminology around like district wide examples of uh one time costs, and I I just, you know, could you provide some examples of what would be a like a one time cost that 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 we're talking about here? Uh, and then I have another question regarding the the enrollment. So the the snapshot that you gave was in relation to K two enrollment in comparison to other B P S uh residents. Do we see the same numbers at other key transitional points um in the academic trajectory, like say around like the ninth grade? Do we see that that same trend um there?
Those are, I love, there was a lot of great questions there. Um, I'll I'll start with the question about the social emotional supports on S R. Um, you know, we came last year and presented on um a num- in the last few years, we really expanded the number of social workers we have in the district. And we've increased the ratio of school psychologists at the high school level to meet national standards. Those are not S R funded positions. Those are already funded on the general fund. So most of the critical foundation for quality positions that we have talked about were funded on general fund and not through S R. We do see a lot of expansion of S R positions to be able to at the school levels and um you know, schools have done uh enough various, and Serena could give examples of um of positions that schools have added either through tutoring or additional um ESL support for students. Um, but the the core social emotional stuff, I just want to emphasize, um, has been a general funded is not at risk.
Yeah, I would also just add that um, one of the priority areas is social emotional. Meaning that anything that schools were doing on S R to fund additional social emotional would be eligible to come over, because we see that as priority. One of the things that I really want to dig into on the social workers is how their times being used right now. Um, and um uh i- and uh i- in general, if we were to add additional social workers in and um in support what that would look like to benefit the students. So in other words, how much is direct service? Uh, how much is other kind of work um for social workers? So this is an area that Chief Kelton and I are going to dig into. Um, but but social emotional is something that will only increase, not decrease in the years to come.
Um, your last question was about enrollment um snapshots. We can certainly provide you with more information about um capture rates by grade. Um, you know, there are a couple of critical places where we see students exit B P S. Um, it used to be the transition between fourth and fifth grade was a big exit point because charter started in fifth, many charters started in fifth grade. We regained a lot of students in seventh grade, uh mostly uh from exam schools, but that's data that I can provide as a follow up uh to the committee.
You asked of an example of a one time cost. So um with equitable literacy, there was like a a big push to buy a bunch of curriculum materials. Now, it doesn't mean that there won't be fresh over time, but that major investment would be an example of a one time cost. And then you also asked about the school based equity roundtable. And so school leaders did have to submit agendas. I will also say that as part of an S R investment, there was a push to strengthen that work of school based equity roundtables as well.
Okay, so being also a part of that, like that process, just again, like I I I really wonder how at this stage, just like across the district, do you consider it like a successful strategy at this point to sort of engage community stakeholder input?
I think maybe um Chief Grantson could um also weigh in on this. Uh, but I think one of the things that we're trying to do is to ensure that um that the rep tool is being used consistently at the school level and the district level in all decision making, and that the roundtables are a place where the where the empowerment of some decision making happens. Um, Chief Grantson, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that.
Um, yeah, no, I I just, um, um, I want to sort of underscore what you just said Superintendent Skipper. So I think that um, it, the school based equity roundtables can be um, the appropriate place to to engage uh families and students and and staff um around these conversations around budget. I think we have some things we learned last year about um what went well and what we can do differently uh in terms of making sure that um it's effectively used in that way, and we did that with the S R funding. And so the S R funding um was actually contingent upon school leaders, holding their school based equity roundtables um with support of their family liaison, and then actually uh bringing that documentation forward, and they didn't get their S R release until there was documentation of a um collaborative process with the school based equity roundtable. Um, and so that was sort of the the incentive uh to do it. And we saw that we we had one hundred percent participation, right? Uh, in that process, once it was tied to that. I think where we are now, as we've transitioned um um, under Superintendent Skipper's leadership, and she's clearly outlined in the priorities, the school based equity roundtables are part of what we're doing. But we sort of lost some momentum during the summer around our school based equity roundtables. So what we have are opportunities and the um opportunity gaps team working on now is the mechanism to make sure that all school leaders are able to upload agendas um and make sure that they are able to document who's in attendance as the regular members of those roundtables. So that we could be in a place where we where we show that it's actually happened. So the dashboard that we've talked about in terms of race reckoning, another component of that that um the superintendent and I have talked about is, we should be able to see how the re- roundtables are regularly being held. And that's, that's what we're trying to get to. And so in short, I would just sort of answer that question by saying it is an effective form um for this work, and we are trying to strengthen it to show evidence uh similar to what I shared um shared um in previous meeting, evidence of our work, right? We like, we understand that the community won't really uh believe in this as a strategy unless they can see documentation that it's happening.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. LaPera.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, team, for um the presentation information. Um, I guess for my first question is in in just checking my assumptions. Um, is it safe to assume that when we're looking at um year twenty four, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, and even as far as twenty twenty six, that we are currently projecting a continued decline in enrollment for those coming years?
Yes.
Okay, um, and so my next question is, and I feel like I've asked this before, but clearly I still don't have a clear answer in my head is how are we working to understand the longer, like the long term enrollment projections for our district? So I'm not talking two years from now, but ten years from now, like especially as we're engaging in the Green New Deal. And as we're talking about, right, like the need to interrogate and strategically right size the district. How are we looking? How are we forward looking to understand what buildings we're building for what numbers?
So, um, yeah, thank you for that question. It's it's really important. I would say we have worked with the Boston Planning and Development Agency to develop better models of projecting uh based on the housing, um estimated new housing in the city. Um, that that work had gotten disrupted by the pandemic, um and we're looking to expand and possibly bring in um an external partner to do a long term demographic trend for us, just to sort of anchor um what we know with um some sort of outside validation. Um, the the biggest piece I'll just say is, we know a lot about the future enrollment because the size of our cohorts dictate enrollment. So we that K two class from the last few years that has been smaller, we will see in a fairly predictable way that flow throughout the system. So we know more about what our ninth grade enrollment looks like than a lot of demographers who could come in and bring out external data. Because we've seen the trends happen throughout the system and they're fairly consistent over time. The last thing I'll just note from a build, uh sort of a Green New Deal perspective, as we start to define the number of schools we have, we have so many buildings that need to be replaced, and so many schools, that it will actually be a quite a long time before we worry about building too many schools. Because we'll be, we'll, you know, in the case of some of our schools, we're talking about the Irving, we're talking about multiple communities who can merge together and build a new community in a new building. It's a much more exciting way to launch a merger than it is sort of merging schools because of enrollment declines. When you are building a community through a new uh construction process, it's a very exciting way to do it.
Thank you for that. Um, it's exciting to hear that there's additional work being done in terms of working with the um demographer. Has that information already? What the information that's already been collected in terms of future year of long term projections? Has that already been shared with community members? Can we expect to see that as part of the process with the Green New Deal?
Um, it has not been shared, I think, um uh, it's been discussed and that we recognize the need to do that as part of the public engagement process. Um, and so the planning analysis team, um, which is part of the finance team, is definitely working to to make that available to the community as we start to talk about it. Um, and start to launch community based conversations or neighborhood based conversations.
Thank you. And to your point around, there's so much need, given the sad state of our overall facilities. I think you're right. Um, I think the piece that is top of mind for me is while there's need all across the district, there are also uh different numbers of families and school age children in different parts of the city. And so there is different need in different neighborhoods. Um, and so I would hate for us to put schools and places that we have to keep busing them to all the way across the city uh longer term. And so those are some of the pieces that are just top of mind for me. I have some additional questions, but I'll I'll wait for the next go around.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez, we're back to you.
Just find my unmute. Um, I'm thinking three things and then I'll I'll wrap. Um, I think the first thing I'm here, I'm here, I agree with you, and I'm hearing you name, like there's work to do about the the funding formula. Um, and I'm sure we're also in agreement, like I think some of this is like a funding formula problem, and some of this is like a much larger enrollment problem and the the sort of like if we had sort of a tighter reign on enrollment and we didn't allow schools to build classrooms that were too small, and we also had less segregated programming, I think we'd find ourselves in a very different conversation. But that's like a central problem and not one that's just school based. Um, so I hope like as we're thinking about the future, that is like we also, you know, obviously part of of this puzzle. Um, I guess I'm trying to think of like how to frame the question, so I'm going to hold on it and I'll ask a qu- a different question about a different slide. On slide eighteen, around the sort of projections and enrollment, I'm just curious why pre K is not included as the starting point? You know, my my understanding the state uh like reports on pre K and K O together. Um, but that's not part of our our data, and so I'm just curious the
Um, we we primarily, we we chose to focus on K two enrollment in this case, because it's um, the first place where we offer universal pre K in B P S um schools. And so as part of the U P K program, we have a lot of community partners. We have a mixed delivery model for both K zero and K one. Um, it's um uh less predictive for us in terms of how many sort of K two students will enroll. So that by emphasizing that K two cohort, it's really um, that is still truly our sort of entry grade and that 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 grade is predictive of future trends.
Yeah. It's an, it's an interesting way of thinking about it, only because those are the fit, that is sort of regardless how we're thinking about it, that is a family's first experience with the system. And so from like a a recruitment, but also a retention strategy, like that is how people know us. And we have the work on sort of the backend to do, to like deliver high quality early childhood education. But at the same time, like we have to recognize from like a the way that people sort of understand their experience, that is B P S. Superintendent, you are going to go.
Sorry, I was switching over my my AirPods. They died. Sorry. I was going to say that it, uh, so your question's a fascinating one, because we actually just um, we just started meeting with Krista McSwain and the city to look at K zero, K one data. Um, and it would be worth having a presentation on that separately to be able to see the trends, because one of the things we're seeing is that we're fairly saturated with K one except for in certain parts of the city. And in K zero, we don't, we lack capacity. So the city is moving to shift toward K zero. And to your point about it being the earliest entry, right? We need to put a lot of emphasis on it, because it is the time in which families start to get to know the system. And that happens both in mixed delivery as it does in our, in our K zero, in our K one, in K zero seats. And so I think that's going to be something that um, we're going to start working now that with the early childhood initiative through the city on. I would say it actually starts back at birth. If we engage families well and start to give them the sets of resources they're going to need to connect to, including playgroups.
Yes.
But one of the things, you know, I, when I visited the Umana, I always love to go into the playgroups. And um, you know, they had a booming playgroup to the point that they had to open up another whole space. And these are the students that now will eventually come to the Umana because they feel that connection. So I appreciate this point because I think it's one that we, we do as a system, need to go back in time and start doing differently.
Yeah. One more question on slide twenty five. Um, it talks about sort of sustainable funding sources. And I'm curious what other sources we're looking at, you know, my understanding, like Student Opportunity Act funds, they're not that significant. There's no indication that Title One or IDEA will increase unless, you know, I like missed something. So like, isn't the only other source new money from the city?
That is, that is primarily what we're talking about when we refer to sustainability planning. I know you know, we will continue to sort of aggressively pursue other external and private funding, but when we talk about sustainable funding sources, we're talking about local revenues.
Yeah. So like, there's not real potential for growth in that space.
Um, it's, it's, that's a harder question to answer. Um, I would, you know, I would defer to our partners in the city. We continue to be an incredibly um prosperous city who uh is fueled by lots of uh new um construction. Um, there's also opportunities for the city to think about other revenue streams for uh public education. And it, it's just, there's such a broad array of things the city could do. Um, but it's also not, it, I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to comment on that. I would defer to our city partners.
Yeah.
Then my, and my last question, and not to, to belabor this point, the, the fifty million that's currently being spent on soft landings. On some level, we're naming that like that ends in fiscal year twenty five, unless I'm missing something.
Y- yes, that, that is certainly part of the signal that we're sending around part of the hold harmless. Some of the hold harmless will be recouped by enrollment gains that we've seen this year. Part of the hold harmless will be re categorized as our foundation for quality. It'll be a statement around these are compliance positions that we know we need to fund. But when we start to move things over, it is an opportunity for communities to really see and, and have to understand the unsustainable nature of this, unless we get new, you know, revenue or we make other trade offs as a district.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I also just want to say that from a leader perspective, there was a time in BPS um that um it was not, it was not a question of would we be cutting? It was a question of how much we would be cutting. Um, I can remember in all my years of leadership at the school level, one year we were level funded. It's two thousand, it was two thousand and four. And um it, it takes building muscle um for school leaders to have to strategically make those decisions with their community. We are, we have been out of that game for a while. Um, and so we have to help people, communities and our school leaders get back into the game of thinking about how to live with the reality of enrollment, the funding, and how to make the best decisions with those, with those bounds. So for us to do that all in one year would be way too much for our schools. What we're doing is we're going through and supporting our new leaders who have never really had to do it. And even our veteran leaders who it's been a while since they have. So that, that is really also underlying this and part of really the, the context and the conversation that we had with school leaders um around the soft landing piece.
Yeah, and it, and I, I hear that and I hear there's sort of like what I'm hearing are is sort of like two things, right? Like there's a management strategy from your end of like just sort of like building the skill set around thinking of sort of funding streams in a very different way. And I think I get that. And then there's the practicality of what happens in two fiscal years when money no longer exists. Um, and then there's like the bigger, you know, I'm gonna keep saying this, like there's the bigger implications from central to get enrollment right and create caps at schools or classroom caps at schools so that we're not building classrooms that we can't, like we're not setting up classrooms and offering them to families that we actually can't fill, nor have we historically filled.
Yep, there is all of that, right? Well, all of that has to happen as a system.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. LaPera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, the superintendent just went into some of the pieces that I was going to ask about. I suppose I'll just ask the other piece. One of the things that I saw last year, um, you know, we've been talking a lot about the schools, like school expenses and kind of school um potential need to, to just think strategy um and to the point whenever we do get to cuts, like what that could look like. Um, but I, I remember last year when we were going through the budget process, uh, there were also um at least positions that were created uh in terms of in, in central. And so I don't, I don't think that all of those positions uh were necessarily filled. Um, I know we have vacancies in a variety of places across the system. Um, but I'm just curious, you know, aside from at the school level, how we're thinking of engaging with what we know to be cuts in the future at the central office level.
Um, oh, Superintendent, I'll let you go.
Yeah, so it, the same holds true for central, right? Our departments um we have to make sure that at, at the central office level, that each of our departments is thinking strategically and has its own set of goals about how to support the broader priorities of the district when it comes to our schools. And the same issue of practice that I was just talking about with the schools applies to our central offices. Um, case in point, there are positions that weren't filled. Um, and that was one of the first lists I asked for about a couple of weeks after I came in. Um, because if, if a position goes unfilled and sometimes the position's been unfilled for multiple budgets, chances are you don't need that position. Chances are you're doing the work in a different way. And so that's the work we have to help the central office leaders through the chiefs and the deputies do so that what we're really doing is aligning our organization to a set of priorities. Everybody pointed to a set of priorities, but more than just pointed concrete goals with metrics and measures that what we're doing is making the difference that we're intending for it to happen. So that's the exciting work to be done at the central level, at the school levels. The schools are very, the schools are much better at it in a lot of ways because of you know, they're used to the framework of continuous improvement, right? Like it's not a new concept to them. And I think, you know, one of the things that, that we're doing with the regional networks is to really like support the schools in that way of thinking about how they're measuring success, how they're measuring student outcome, what continuous improvement looks like. Central offices need that same level of strategy. They need to be able to create those goals. They need to be able to fo- to follow those. And so that is work that Nate and the team have been working on and will continue to work on in this budget process for the central offices.
Thank you for that. Um, I just thought of a quick question here, and it doesn't have to be answered in the moment. I know we're supposed to get a more in-depth report regarding ESR. But on slide eleven, it just talks about like the ESR allocation versus spent. It would be really helpful to get that broken out by ESR two and ESR three, just so that we have a sense of you know, kind of where we are with both of those. Um, and then also, I, I'm just curious where schools are based on what was allocated directly to the schools um and where they may be seeing some successes with their investments and perhaps what schools are lagging behind in terms of their investments. Thank you.
Yeah, this, this was prime for Serena, so I'm gonna let you jump right in on it, Serena.
Yes, so um the superintendent called a meeting, I'm just giving you one example of a bright spot um where uh we spoke to a few schools to under- to like understand the depth of how they were using their funds, particularly around inclusion. And so there were some school, um, there were a couple of schools that did share their like wins and highlights and, and what that um was a part of. In addition, our team internally is looking at the metrics. So as part of the plan, schools submitted what progress um measures they were using. Currently, those are in the um published plan of like the, the metrics they were trying to, that they said that they would use. But we're now like diving in to see where we're seeing successes to then try to understand like more about it and share it more broadly. So that work is happening right now. And then yes, um, there will definitely, uh, definitely be a breakdown of S or two and three in the report. It's actually one of the first things that it will be in the report. Yeah.
And then I'll just add very quickly, going forward, the monthly budget update documents that you receive will include a separate breakout of ESR so that you can see year to date spending on ESR and projected spending for the year on ESR um going forward on a monthly basis. So that'll be part of the, the documentation we sent to you.
Very much appreciate that.
Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And this has been a healthy conversation. So uh, Mr. Cooter, I have a couple of questions and then more of a philosophical comment. So first of all, with regard to ESR, and I appreciate this may be Ms. LaRocque, I'm not sure, but um I do appreciate how you point out that there is a difference between encumbered and spent. Right? And so under the ESR requirements, um, it is three separate years of funding and we do have to encumber um our spending by September thirtieth of each of the three years, even if we don't actually spend it. Right? And that um the Department of Ed has been good in giving us still giving us, giving all districts across the country delays given to the states and then the states pass it to the, to the cities um delays in the actual expending. But they have not, as I understand it, um delayed the requirements to actually encumber. So I get nervous when I see that particularly in the school based funding, they only spent and you defined it as spent, which was in both encumbered and expended, right? Um, they only spent about half of the funds, like twenty three, twenty four million, and they didn't spend twenty three. So did we encumber, you know, make spending decisions on all the funds that we needed to by September thirtieth? Because my understanding was if they weren't encumbered, even if we haven't yet and spent it. But if they weren't, if spending decisions weren't made, those funds would theoretically go back to the state and then to the federal government.
So you're right in that the, the government, so personnel does not transfer over on that September thirtieth, but they did say if it's committed, it has to be committed by that September thirtieth for.
Yeah, that was a committed and come, but that's what I.
Correct.
So did we commit? I just want to make sure where we are spending the funds that will give us by the federal government, even if we haven't actually and it, and some is rolling over.
For, for S R two, um, we can carry forward unspent funds, even funds that are uh unencumbered by September thirtieth of the first year of the grant into the second year. So all unspent funds uh from the schools that you were referencing, but also from the district um were carried forward into the current year. No money was returned to the state from last year. And we are on track for all S R two funds to be appropriately encumbered or fully expended by September thirtieth, twenty twenty three, which is our deadline for S R two, at which point we can no longer carry forward. And we have plans to fully encumber or expend by September thirtieth, twenty twenty four for S R three.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I want to talk about enrollment for a second, then I'll come back to ESR one more time and, and how I see him as tying together. Thank you for those details about enrollment, particularly as we looked at the city amounts, et cetera. I, I agree with the thought of uh pre K would have been interesting to see as well, not just uh K two. I, I also noted and, and this may have been more anecdotal, but I am intrigued by um, I think, Mr. Cooter, when you were showing the enrollment slides, you were talking about you broke out between K to six and then middle schools and then high schools. In talking with school leaders in East Boston, in particular, at an event recently, they were noting that they are losing less students um now in fourth and fifth grade. When we at BPS have traditionally lost students, um when families choose cha- move to charter schools because they're concerned about too many transitions. Um, right? The uncertainty over our K to eight, K to six model, K to six, K to eight, and, and what was gonna happen for middle school. So they particularly if students were in a K to six, we were losing them in the fourth and fifth grade. And East Boston, you know, was a great little um pilot or experiment for us because all of our schools moved to K to six and East Boston High School moved to seven to twelve. And there's one less transition point and more certainty for parents. And so the school leaders, particularly of the K to six schools, were saying to me, they are losing less students now in fourth and fifth grade. And I want, than they had traditionally lost. And I'm wondering if that's because enrollment overall is down. Um, and, and there were many other factors going on in East Boston, right? The gentrification has been incredible, families that have been moving out because of that, because the cost of living in, in East Boston, now the cost of real estate, et cetera. Um, but I was really intrigued by have we seen any difference in enrollment trends because of our shifting out of a middle school model and, and expanding more high schools to seven to twelve, et cetera. Mr. Cooter, that would probably be for you.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Um, so in terms of pockets of success, I will say we are seeing increased enrollment in, in K one just to, to talk about the preschool a little bit. So that is a one other pocket of success. And um we have seen um increased enrollment in fourth grade at schools that have added the sixth grade. And so what, you know, that was part of where we started to see families exit the system with the uncertainty around where their students were gonna rate. Um, so I do think it's, it's beyond anecdotal evidence. One of the sort of overlapping factors that, that's causing us to really not see the full trend is the pandemic. And so um because a lot of this expansion happened really coming out of the pandemic, we haven't quite seen how it, it sort of changes the way students flow fully. Uh, but we do anticipate that that K to six, seven to twelve model will help us stabilize enrollments in third, fourth, and fifth grade. Um, and I see the superintendent is uh just raised her hand, so I'm gonna let her jump in as well.
Yeah, no, I think what, I think what Nate said is, is um, is my impression as well. Um, you know, I, I think um when you, when you're able to get students at the high school level in the seventh grade and you're able to really work with them, um, you take a major transition off the table for parents and for students. And so I think that, that in part is helping. I also think East Boston is a really interesting and, and powerful model for us to look at from a regional approach of how the school leaders work together in knowing the students, knowing the families in that handoff. And it's the trust of that handoff that parents are really seeking and looking for. So I think we have a lot to learn about it. I think there's areas of the city geographically that we could replicate it. And then there's areas of the city where it's not as easy from a, from a geographic standpoint, but yet there's groupings of schools in which we could actually achieve it. But I, I, you know, I do think that um the way that services are galvanized, that the community organizations galvanize around the school structures of East Boston.
Galvanize around the school structures of East Boston all lend itself to just sort of a more seamless flow for the students. So, you know, it'll be interesting to sort of see how that plays out in other parts, which we could, like the Rosendale area, for instance. Where we're attempting to do that same level, you know, High Park Rosendale, that same intentionality.
And I and I think even around Dudley Square, I think a number of the schools there have been doing pathways into the. As an example, not required, but certainly parents have certainty if they if they want it, which is nice. And I think, yeah, the head of school in East Boston is obviously, East Boston High has done a great job going to all the elementary schools and working with the school leaders. The synergy there between all of them now is phenomenal to see, number one. But two, I absolutely think a role model that we can roll out to other neighborhoods in the city. Madam Chair, I think I'm past time. I think others have all raised their hand. May I finish with one final comment? Thanks. I think just kind of looping these two together, I've been thinking about. Mr. Cootie, your presentation about moving S R fund, you know, soft landings, as they're called, to S R. And taking what we've had of the past couple of years and moving it to hard. And I think, and I'm struggling in understanding that. And thinking through the interpretations, the pros and cons, but I did, I just just want to comment that. You know, S R was designed by the federal government to help us recover with learning loss during the pandemic. And many districts have talked about their adding tutoring or, you know, after-school programs and that type of thing, all of which I agree with. And districts nationally have struggled with the concept of not having a fiscal cliff. I think our approach of doing some of those, but also now starting to think of soft landings. As an appropriate use of S R funds. Because the thought process is we did not want to disrupt schools, that students had and families had gone through so much disruption because of the pandemic. That to come back to a school and have a lot of changes and not have the school secretary, not have an assistant principal, not having another of these other things. That enrollment doesn't allow them to have. Is a way to think about, in my mind, a way to help our students recover from the pandemic. And the emotional and social challenges that that caused. But it is, and and so I'm okay with that from that viewpoint. But it is setting up a real challenge two years from now. And we have work to do for families to understand that. You know, we have such devotion among our families to the small schools in our city. And we hear it, we heard parents tonight talking about it. Though it's interesting to hear parents from one of the small schools that have traditionally always defended that very small, small school model. Seem open to the idea of moving to the Irving, but wanting to be involved in the planning, and I love that. And we should do everything we can to make sure that families are involved, truly involved in the planning. We think of how B A A parents were involved in planning that new school and and. Quincy Upper parents, families have been involved in planning for that, and the Carter family has been involved in planning for that. We should make sure the families that are going to be in the Irving as it's renovated are involved, because that can be a model for us as we do other schools. Because when families are excited about building new building, it helps ease their concern over what they're giving up from a small school. And we're going to have this cliff two years from now. And unless we really do this work now to get family excited, families excited about new buildings. And yes, they'll be a bit bigger and maybe it'll be two going into one or one and a half going into one. But when they see what they can get from it. It may lessen the. Love for the small schools, which are really costing this district. And it's and i- i- it's unfair, it's it's a challenge, as we know. For equity for the rest of our district, when we're spending that much on soft landings for an individual school. But it was, so I'm supporting the move of S to it, but I'm saying we got a lot of work to do, Superintendent, over the next two years. For families to understand the implication of it and embrace and get them in on the planning process for new, bigger schools. And let's get shovels in the ground.
Yeah, I would just, I would just add, what we see is families love their schools. Their families love the Boston Public Schools when they're in it. And so I think that's a message.
Individual school.
They love their individual schools and, you know, we have seen success where we've taken small schools and grow them. And the superintendent certainly knows how to do it. We've done it at the Elliott, which started as a school that was a hundred and fifty-eight students and grown it. What we need to do, you're absolutely right, is set a course, a vision for what we want to do, what we want our schools to be. And then bring our families and get the feedback from the families on that vision so they feel a part of it.
Because I've heard to be part of the building of, like we heard from the some of the parents tonight about involve us in the planning for the Irving. So we're in from the beginning, we're not being told. Thank you. I've gone long enough, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One, I I know we talk about declining enrollments, but my question is. How do we also look at those declining enrollments as we are looking at? Grade changes that are coming about some of those schools as a result of our opening seven to twelves. And in shifting grading patterns, so how do we hold schools harmless about some of their declining enrollments? That are really caused more by some of our, you know, moving through the district. As we need to make changes. And also coupled with that, something we didn't really talk a lot about is, you know, the whole issue of moving towards an inclusive schools. And thinking about the additional resources, classrooms and other supports that may need to be added. As we reshuffle. So how do all three of those conversations come together? So that school communities are not getting, you know, the panic that, oh, my gosh, our enrollment is decreasing. You know, and there are all these other things that are coming along.
I'm not sure how the answers keep coming back to Tech Boston, but this one seems to as well. When we made the decision to expand Mildred Ave to a K to eight school from a middle school. One of the things we knew was it was going to impact feeder patterns at some of our other schools, right? In particular, Tech Boston. And one of the things we did as a start of, in particular, in relationship to that program with. I say credit to the leadership at Tech Boston, particularly at the time, head of school Nora Vernaza in helping us identify the issue. Is create a system of support for schools in enrollment transition. Where we have a specific change that is underway. So if we know the district policy around grade span. Or feeder pattern is causing a school to go through enrollment transition. We have a policy of reviewing that and providing essentially an equivalent weighted student funding support. For that school in transition. The the key to that being successful, though, as you were mentioning, is that those decisions being strategic and intentional. And supposed to unintended consequences. To your other question around, you know, inclusion and inclusive support. I think one of the things we're finding most critical about the way the superintendent has laid out her priorities and vision. Is really, these are multiple dimensions around one core question of how do we design our schools to be successful for all kids. And I think for the answer for some schools that are under enroll. Is it maybe that you have, you know, two sections of general that are under enrolled and one section of substantially separate? And the answer is to become one fully inclusive school with the same number of kids. And suddenly you move from a school with three under-enrolled sections to a school with two really re- uh, two really well-resourced inclusive programs. And so part of our work over the next year. Is to work with schools facing these structural challenges to understand, is it a fundamental structural problem? Are there no longer students in the neighborhood? Is there something about the way we are feeding students to school that isn't working? Or is is there a series of sort of strategic decide, design decisions we can make? To rebuild over a number of years, that school community into something that is sustainable in the new way we want to operate our schools going forward. And I think what we'll find is there are some of our schools with structural challenges that will fit into the first category. That might need to merge, might need to change in fundamental ways. And there are also a number of schools that fall into the second. Where with some thoughtful redesign of their programs and the organization of their courses. We can achieve the schools we want within the same school community, just with a different use of resources inside the building.
Thank you. Couple of other questions regarding some of the issues that you showed, particularly around S R and moving forward. So one question I have, as we're moving forward with Mass Core, do all high schools now have world language?
I don't see David coming off you to answer my, is that question? So I'm I'm going to have to get back to you about the number of high schools that have world languages as we do the rollout of of Mass Core.
Yeah, I I I can, I I believe that. I believe that there are still a number of our high schools, particularly our smaller high schools, that we're trying to figure that out. And in our alternatives. And so we'll we'll get to the exact breakdown and number on it. It also has to do with where we sequence the world language. In some, you know, in in some schools, it was in the eleventh and twelfth grade, which is just never a good idea. And so it, so we need to look at that, because it also has to do with what they're, what they have to take. As core subject areas for their freshman and sophomore year. The seven to twelves actually have the easiest way to do it. So we'll get back to you on it. But I know the alternative schools right now don't have have not gone to that next step.
Also, I saw this is a line in there of increasing field trips. And I wanted a little bit more clarity, is that at all age groups or just at some class levels? I know this is something that high schools have been interested in, and I know that during pandemic. All of our. Groups who are going to have to slow, you know, all of our field trips, et cetera, had to, you know. Stop. So just wondering how all of that's coming back online and is that an opportunity to broaden participation as well? Or guarantee opportunity?
Yeah, no, this is, this is something we really want to expand on. The idea that our city is a a map for the kids to explore. You know, that that going to museums, going into businesses, you know. Being able to learn the different parts of the city is part of the B P S experience. And, you know, I think i- i- the the other piece is just global too, like we're working now, you know, to build back international. Trips that we used to do. So this is, it's certainly in the new norm. And we, you know, we still have to play by whatever the 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 health rules are in the different areas. But this is an area we want to build on at the high school level. We're also having this conversation about like scaffolding their experiences for credit. And so how can we make the learning go beyond the walls out into the different businesses and community where they are working? And where they, you know, to see that as a learning experience. So this will, this will be something that we intend to start to to ramp up. And the advantage, it not just for the high schools, it would also be for, you know, for all, for for all of our students.
And in the interim, as the district, as we ramp up, schools are using their S R funds to do field trips as well. And all.
I I was happy to see that we have increased the number of guidance counselors at the ninth grade level. Question I have, though, is as we look at where our kids have difficulty and and move, moving forward into the system. Why aren't we pushing that back, particularly with the avenue of seven to twelve schools? Why aren't we looking more at guidance there in terms of preventative measures? So that we're not looking at kids in the ninth grade who are already on shaky ground. But being able to, you know, spot earlier, kids that are struggling and figuring if that's going to be a strategy. That could help us prevent some later drop off or, you know, under-resourced kids.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a great question, Chair. I I there, there had been a proposal to to do middle school counselors. I think one of the things we're trying to figure out and will in this budget. The night, the ones that you see as ninth grade, isn't necessarily just working with ninth grade, they could well be working with eighth grade or seventh grade. But I think what we need to do is really look at. Where is the entry point for college and career? Where does that piece start? What's the earliest possible? How do we move back career and college exploration into younger grades in a very systemic way? You know, now the, for instance, Naviance is, you know, one of the, one of the tools that we have. We have the ability to be able to go back in time on that, you know, to much younger grades. So you're right, that much as we're looking at this, moving back to seven. That should be at minimum the entry level, right, at which we're having these conversations. And, you know, setting expectations for students around college and career. But even in the younger grades, there's no, no reason why we're not doing that reach back. Having people from different careers come in. That's why the Yamato was, that was such a wonderful event, right? Because that plants a seed. One of the students in that audience that day hopefully heard me talking about teaching and said, maybe that's me. I can teach, right? So you'll you'll hear more to this, but even, but I think the rollout was to the ninth grade. But again, in the seven to twelve schools, that could mean they're working seventh, eighth, ninth.
Yeah, I I think personally, I would rather see it start happening in the fourth grade. But yeah, but I would at least just ask about the seventh grade right now. Yes, and my last question is, again, I was happy to see that there was going to be a reinvestment. Or there is a reinvestment in restorative justice. I mean, we've heard from a number of community partners over this week after Monday night's presentation. Concerns that we were not looking at restorative justice in ways that could again mitigate some of the issues. So what what is the thinking about what that investment will look like or is looking like?
Yeah, so I think if Chief Kelton is still on, you know, she has little ones, so she might not be up, there she is. So we can talk a little bit about this. This is actually an area that really didn't get a lot of movement. And so with Chief Kelton coming in, this is now in her department. And so this is where we're intending to hire, we're also hiring Assistant Superintendent for Youth Opportunities. Under which restorative justice will will be a piece. So Chief Kelton, I don't know if you want to talk about just some initial thinking.
Yeah, so I think right now we have restorative justice coordinators. And our thinking right now is that they're they're housed, I have them housed with this Office of Social Work. And that was intentional because we have our district, district social workers. Who are sort of leading the regional PLCs, the regional, you know, they have a group of schools underneath them with all the social workers. And the thinking is that the restorative justice, that's a great entry point for them. To start to train our social workers and our district social workers in restorative practices. So I think part of what we really need to distinguish and decide for the district is. Being a school that utilizes restorative justice is different than being a school that utilizes restorative practices. So we do have schools that have restorative justice coordinators in them that have funded those positions. But what we're finding is that training staff and then also training students on how to utilize restorative practices. Is really where we're maximizing our capacity in creating climates. And school culture that's more accepting and more, you know, operates in a more inclusive manner. That allows us to handle issues of discipline, address issues of reentry after code of conduct issues. In a more restorative way. So I think, you know, we're also using the push-in model with our restorative justice work. And that's coming through Succeed Boston, who's hired new safe and welcoming school specialists. Who are going to be trained in restorative justice as well and really leaning on the current restorative justice coordinators. So when schools are having issues around bullying or having multiple issues around code of conduct. Succeed Boston is often in those conversations. So as we sort of move our restorative justice coordinators in that realm, we're able to do the push-in model for schools. To sort of assess the climate in the school and help the staff and the administrators. See where the issues are and create those restorative practices in the school culture. I don't know if what I said makes any sense. I don't know if what I said makes any sense. I'm really tired. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I I would, I would add to that, that for restorative practice, we have to actually train the school. It's not something that just happens over here. It it has to be engaging and training the school. And so it may be that we also will be engaging as part through the budget with partners who can come in and has the, have the capacity to be able to train a whole school. Um, it's, it doesn't just happen right here. So I I think this is something that we want to give vision to because I think when it was first introduced, it was sort of introduced um, as a you know, restorative, restorative justice, like as a, as kind of like the the solution. But there wasn't an action plan. So that's what Jillian and her team are working to do is to come up with the plan, identify the partners that can be involved in the training and then work with schools to become places where restorative practice is part of their actual practice.
So we're telling them, yeah, if I can. That we also um, did a pilot in three schools to learn what it would take to really launch a true restorative justice program that we've learned from and processed with the restorative justice team under Arthur Collins. And that's some of the work that we'll be using going forward to inform some of the action.
Mm hmm. Is this happening at all grade levels, starting with our, you know, kindergarten and going up? Yeah, not just the high school.
Yes. Yeah. And the the, the thing to remember about restorative justice is it requires a lot of front-loading. Um, and it takes time to see results. So it's really a culture shift within a school. Um, a- and it's a a difference in how classrooms are set up, how welcoming practices happen. Um, so it's really, you know, it's a very extensive process.
Yeah. I I mean, I'm hoping as we're moving towards inclusive schools that we are also working on these things simultaneously. So that we really are overall shifting school culture to one that's more engaging and more supportive of all of our students.
Yeah.
Um, are there any final questions, comments before we move on? If not, again, thank you all for your presentation tonight. And um, we are looking forward to more conversations as we move forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to public comment, our reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers or public comments on reports.
All right. Thank you. New business? Oh, Dr. Alkins.
Yeah, I mean, this is actually a follow-up to the conversation. So I think at some point in our next meeting, we should probably revisit this conversation around restorative justice because from what I'm hearing and from what we've also heard this evening, there seems to be a disconnect in what was conveyed at Monday's meeting. And, you know, what we're hearing in terms of the engagement of restorative justice and restorative practice. So clearly, these eighteen new positions, um, you know, there's, like I said, there's a, there's some type of disconnect there. So it'd be valuable for us to revisit what the nature of those positions are and um, obviously, the, the, the um, the, the concerns of uh, of racism, the concerns of uh, a lot, a lot of the the mischaracterization of um, members of our, of our school community um, as well. So we want to keep that in mind moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Echoing Dr. Alkins, which I feel like I'm just going to get a mug so I can hold it up for future meetings. Um, and then the only other new, the second piece of new business I would just want to make sure we circle back to is and it all connects. Sorry, I'm so tired that I'm losing voice. Like in order for us to to sort of realize some of the conversations we're having, particularly around fiscal year twenty-five, um, we will need more information around school closures, consolidations and mergers. Um, we can't just just keep saying we're going to build things like we have to know what's happening. And I think as a committee, I'm just like naming it. I think in order for us to move forward through this budget process, I think we would be doing right by Boston Public School students and families if we asked for a lot of clarity around that, that plan. Even if there's like other research that needs to happen to make it real. It's like, this is where we think we are directionally going here, the ten schools that impacted in order to further um, make sure that we don't hit a major cliff in fiscal year twenty-five.
I agree. Thank you. There's, if there's nothing else, that concludes our business for this evening. The school committee will hold its annual organizational meeting virtually on Wednesday, January fourth at five P M. And on that day, committee will approve its twenty twenty-three meeting calendar. And those dates will then be posted on the B P S website. But if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Sarah Second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lo Para?
Yes.
Ms. Palango Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, and happy holidays to everyone and have a good night.
Thank you. You as well.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Holidays.